Good evening, council. We're, I'm going to call the public hearing for October 22nd to order. And clerk may have the roll call, please.
Mayor Stewart in the chair.
Thank you. Just calling council to order here, folks. Thanks.
Mayor Stewart in the chair. Councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova is not in the chamber. Councillor Frye. Councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick. Councillor Weave. Councillor Boyle is not in the chair. Councillor Dominado is not in the chamber. Councillor Bly. And Councillor Kirby Young. You have quorum.
Thank you very much. And first, before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge we run the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Sleabaltees people. We thank them for having cared for this land for millennia and are enjoying getting to know our new partners and understand them as we move forward building this great city together. Also want to take a second just to recognize our fantastic staff here at the city of Vancouver who work every day to make this the best city in the world. We have a small procedural matter to get through before we go to the individual items today on the agenda. So to avoid uncertain procedural uncertainties which arose in previous public hearings, were required under section 18.13 of the procedure bylaw to move a motion to go in the committee of a whole. It is not required, though, to sit as a committee of the whole during the hearing. Therefore, it's the advice of the clerk that the motion to go into the committee of the whole be put to vote and failed by council. So somebody like to move the motion. Thank you very much, Councillor Weave. All in favor, and I hope that's nobody. And I need a second or first. Councillor Kirby Young, thank you. All in favor? None? All opposed? Look at that. Looks like it's unanimously opposed. That's good. Okay, thanks very much. So that's failed. And all opposed, I saw Councillor Weave, myself, Councillor Kirby Young, Councillor Carr, Councillor Frye, Councillor Hardwick, and Councillor Swanson. Okay. Before we begin, I have a few announcements. Welcome everybody tonight to the council chambers. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And I'll be quite strict about that. Don't drift out too far into other matters. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. Speakers may only speak once. And any additional comments can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The persons or representatives of the organizations must also be present identified and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude, the public hearing this evening will recess and reconvene this Thursday, October 24th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And we're going to move to our first item, which is a text amendment miscellaneous and housekeeping amendments. And the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a text amendment miscellaneous and housekeeping amendments, zoning and development bylaw, signed bylaw, and rental house, rental housing stock official development plan. An application by the general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability to make miscellaneous amendments to the zoning and development bylaw, the rental housing stock official development plan, and the signed bylaw in order to improve clarity, update terminology, or address inadvertent errors or omissions, and to better streamline the development review process. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing.
Thank you very much. We have Lisa King, the planner of the citywide and regional planning, here to present the application. Although it's, just raise the mic there for you. And I guess if council, it'd be possible to waive the presentation as well if you thought that appropriate.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Presentation's waived. Are there any questions, though, from council to staff? And we are going to hear from the public now. I see no questions. We have nobody on the official list, so I'm going to call three times if anybody in the audience would like to speak to this text amendment. So I'll call once. Call twice. Three times? Okay, thanks very much. So seeing there are no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. As few or no comments were received after 5:00 PM, I suggest we close the list now and move on to hearing closing comments or any other questions to staff. Everybody okay with that? Good. So staff have any closing comments? Okay, thanks very much. Council have any questions for staff? I don't see any, so we'll make a decision on this application. Somebody have a mover of the recommendation, please. Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Dominado seconded. And we'll call a vote. There we go. Should be up now. We need a vote assist for Councillor De Genova? Councillor Kirby Young? Councillor Frye and Councillor Kirby Young. There we go. Everybody's in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That's passed. Move to item number two is a text amendment, 3560 to 3570 Hall Street and East 20th Avenue. Clerk, please read the application. And we're whizzing along here, so if you... Lots of buttons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an application by the general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability to amend the CD1 bylaw for 3560 to 3570 Hall Street and 2070 to 2020 90 East 20th Avenue to correct the site area in the bylaw. The amendment would achieve the intent of the initial rezoning approval. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing.
Thanks very much. We have Lisa De Jarrelly here, the rezoning planner, to speak to the presentation, but we could waive it, I think, if you think that's appropriate.
Yes, if it's council's wish, this could be waived.
Thanks very much. Yes. Okay, we're good. Everybody okay with waiving that? Excellent. Thank you. And any questions from council to staff on this text amendment? I don't see any. We're going to hear from the public. We don't have anybody on the official list, but I'm going to call three times. Would anybody like to speak to this text amendment? For Hall Street and East 20th Avenue? Going twice? And one more time? Three times? I don't see anybody here to speak, so we'll close the speakers' list. And there were no comments received after 5:00 PM today, so it's okay with council. We'll close the public comment on this item. Everybody looks okay with that? Staff have any closing comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Council have any questions? Don't see any. So could somebody move the motion, please? Councillor Carr, thank you. Seconder. Councillor Boyle. I'll have a vote. Oh, is there any debate on this at all? I don't see any, so let's move to a vote. Okay, they're both out of the chamber, so that has passed unanimously. Councillor De Genova and Councillor Kirby Young out of the... We're good? Okay. That's passed. Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to item number three, which is the rezoning of the new St. Paul's Hospital. I'll get the clerk to read the application. Whenever I get a chance.
This is an application by IBI Group Inc. on behalf of Providence Healthcare Society to rezone 1002 Station Street and 250 to 310 Prior Street from I-3 Industrial District and I-2 Industrial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to allow for a new St. Paul's Hospital and Health Campus, including institutional, office, research, hotel, retail service, and indigenous cultural uses, along with limited rental housing for healthcare workers. The proposal includes a new public plaza and two childcare facilities. Proposed building heights generally range from 24 to 61 meters. Total floor area proposed is 312,074 square meters. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Two pieces of correspondence in support, and 148 pieces of correspondence, and one petition with 700 signatures in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. So we have Michael Naylor here, the senior planner of the rezoning center, to present the application. I think this is when we better see the application, so...
Yeah.
The presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Michael Naylor, senior rezoning planner. I will be giving the staff presentation tonight and followed by the applicant team who also have a presentation. There we go. The 18.4 acre rezoning site is on Station Street in the Falls Creek Flats. It was acquired by Providence Healthcare Society in 2015 after Providence decided in conjunction with the provincial government that a new state-of-the-art hospital would be built at this new location to replace the existing St. Paul's Hospital on Burrard Street. Beginning in 1916, the site was the location of a train station and rail yards for the Great Northern Railway. The station was demolished in 1965, and the site has been vacant since then. Its current zoning is I-2 and I-3 industrial. To the west of the site is Thornton Park, Heritage and New Buildings on Main Street, and the Citygate Residential Towers. To the north is the Strathcona neighborhood, the viaduct ramps, and Chinatown. The two city blocks that contain the viaduct ramps are part of the northeast Falls Creek planning area for which a plan was approved in 2018. To the east of the site is Trillium Park and the industrial uses along Malkin and National Avenues. The planning for new St. Paul's followed a cost-recovered planning process, which is used for large sites for which policy does not exist to support rezoning. Under this process, the applicant pays an upfront fee for a policy statement phase before a rezoning application is made. The policy statement work for this site began in 2016 at the same time that the Falls Creek Flats plan was under development. So there are two major policy documents enabling the rezoning of this site. They were approved a month apart in 2017. The Flats Plan called for areas of new employment in the western and southern parts of the flats, shown here in blue. Included is the new St. Paul's site in the northwest corner where the emphasis is on healthcare employment. This western end of the flats is where, is in the mixed employment area of the regional context statement, while the eastern part, shown in gray, is designated industrial. This area includes the National Works Yard and the Malkin Produce Row to the east of the rezoning site. At the time of the Flats Plan, a number of route options across the flats were under consideration to provide grade-separated crossing of the Glen Drive rail yard. The plan envisioned that a new arterial would traverse the northern portion of the rezoning site and connect up with one of these crossings. This plan also set out pedestrian, cycling, and greenway routes through the flats, several of which passed through the new St. Paul's site. The policy statement developed for the site envisioned a grouping of new buildings around a core hospital building that together form a healthcare campus. The hospital building is situated in the northeast corner of the site, which is closest to the historic shoreline and to bedrock, meaning that it is the most seismically stable location on the site. The policy statement further set out a new road network that would connect with the surrounding street network and give access to the buildings. In this plan, the new streets are shown in yellow. Included is a new high street connecting the north end of Station Street with Gore Avenue at Prior Street. This high street is envisioned as being the main pedestrian-oriented commercial street for the new campus. All buildings fronting it are to include active street-level uses providing retail and services to workers and visitors on the campus. National Avenue currently exists along the southern edge of the rezoning site in an easement. It will be upgraded in a dedication and realigned to connect with the existing National Avenue to the west. A new local street is proposed along the east edge of the site adjacent Trillium Park. Adjacent to the new hospital building, or I mean, access to the new hospital building will be via the Healthcare Boulevard, which connects the high street to a local street adjacent to the park. This street will not be a dedicated right-of-way, but will be owned and maintained by Providence with a public statutory right-of-way across it. As noted, the policy statement called for a new east-west arterial street across the northern portion of the rezoning site. To the west, this arterial was planned to connect into the new street network planned for northeast Falls Creek once the viaducts come down. The rezoning applicant was asked to assume this street network within their application. Hence, the rezoning drawings submitted in August 2018 all show the new arterial across the northern portion of the site. As council is aware, the decision was made on October 3rd to support grade separation of the rail line along Prior Venables. As such, the dedication of property for an arterial alignment across the new St. Paul's site is not required for road purposes. So the street network now proposed looks like this. Here, the new streets are in yellow and existing streets are in green. The new high street and the streets to the south are unchanged. In place of the arterial across the north is a new local street that connects Dunlevy Avenue with Malkin Avenue. The emergency department is to be located in the northwest corner of the site, so ambulances will access it by way of the new local street. The pedestrian and cycling connections called for in the Flats Plan will be realized across the new St. Paul's site. A greenway will connect from the seawall at Creekside Park to Malkin Avenue with connections available to the north into Strathcona. The greenway follows the Wellness Walk, which circles around the core hospital building. A second future connection is also shown in the Flats Plan from the new high street to Falls Creek by way of Milros Avenue. The application accommodates this connection as well. And here's a revised site plan showing the buildings, which are unchanged, and the revised street network. The area in yellow, which was previously thought to be needed for the arterial, is now available for use by the applicant for building form and open space. The rezoning site is divided into four development parcels that were initially identified in the policy statement. There's a main health campus parcel, which contains the core hospital building, and north, south, and west parcels. Development would occur on the health campus parcel first, followed by the other parcels. The primary land uses in the rezoning are hospital, office, and laboratory, with secondary uses being hotel, retail service, and housing. In all, the CD1 bylaw would permit 212,000 square meters, or 3.4 million square feet, of floor area over the entire site. While there is one CD1 bylaw proposed for this whole area, each of the 10 or so buildings, which will be built throughout the phases of the 20-year build-out period, will be subject to separate development and building permit applications. Building height on the site is limited by two view cones. View cone 22, shown in red, is from Main Street at Sixth Avenue towards the North Shore Mountains. It limits heights across most of the site to about 61 meters or 200 feet. The second view cone, in blue, is from Queen Elizabeth Park, and it limits height across the east edge of the site to about 90 meters or 300 feet. The CD1 bylaw is structured to allow consideration of building heights up to the underside of these view cones. I will now go into each of the parcels and show the proposed form of development. The health campus parcel is the largest at almost 10 acres. It will contain the core hospital building, which will be the first building constructed on the rezoning site. It is to be built through a design-build-finance process, which in this case entails the review of two separate proposals by different applicant teams during the development permit phase. Given this process, the design presented in the rezoning application and shown here is considered indicative only and will be subject to change as the selected design-build team responds to the program put forward by Providence. This building will accommodate all of the departments and clinical functions that currently take place in the existing St. Paul's Hospital, with plenty of additional floor area for new ones. The main door to the hospital will be along the Healthcare Boulevard to the south. The next buildings to be constructed after the hospital are office and research buildings on the south side of the Healthcare Boulevard. A professional office building will serve the needs of healthcare practitioners who need to be in close proximity to the hospital. This is a similar relationship that the Diamond Building at VGH has to VGH's main hospital building, the Patterson Pavilion. St. Paul's is a research hospital, so there are also buildings housing research labs and offices. A 69-space childcare is proposed to be delivered in these buildings, and it is secured through a childcare agreement. The CD1 bylaw contains additional floor area in this parcel, which will be held for Phase 3 of campus development. The floor area will be used for future expansion of the hospital and for additional office and research space. The south parcel is the smallest one. It is located in the southwest corner of the site, immediately north of the train station. Proposed is a single nine-story building, which will contain more offices, but the bylaw allows for hotel use to also locate here. This building is shown as part of Phase 2, as is the development on the other two parcels. So in the west parcel, which is located between the new high street and the existing northernly proportion of Station Street, the plan calls for more office and research space on the north portion of the two-acre site. On the south portion, and directly across from the entry to the Healthcare Boulevard, is a 17-story hotel. The hotel is anticipated to contain suites units with kitchens that can accommodate longer-term stays. The Suites Hotel was an important requirement of the policy statement, which recognizes that 40% of visitors to St. Paul's are from out of the region. As with the hospital building, the street-level portions of these buildings facing the new high street are expected to have active retail service uses and contribute to the vibrancy of the street. In addition, there is a small plaza proposed in the space between the hotel and the office building, which connects the high street to Station Street to the west. It is through this plaza that the future additional bike-ped connection across Main Street to Falls Creek would be achieved. The north parcel is located at the corner of New High Street and Prior Street. A six-story mixed residential-commercial building is proposed. Shown here is viewed from the north. Housing would be introduced in the form of secured rental housing geared to staff who work on the healthcare campus. The existing St. Paul's Hospital does not currently arrange housing for any of its 2,200 employees. The employee base will grow by about 1,000 people at the new location. The rental housing proposed for the site is expected to be a key factor in attracting new staff, such as academics relocating to Vancouver to work on research. While the housing will be secured as market rental through a housing agreement, waiver of the DCLs has not been requested by the applicant. As such, there are no parameters placed on rents through the agreement. The agreement does, however, specify that the housing is limited to workers at the healthcare campus. This is consistent with the policy statement and with the Falls Creek Flats Plan, both of which recommended that the regional context statement be amended to redesignate this parcel from mixed employment, which does not allow residential uses, to general urban, which does, on the proviso that the housing would be for onsite workers. And the proposal is only for this particular parcel, not for the other parcels, to change the regional context statement. The draft bylaw to amend the context statement is included in the hearing agenda package. The 6,500 square meters of floor space allocated in the bylaw for residential would create about 75 dwelling units. The requirement that 35 be family units has also been applied. Because the land dedication for the arterial is no longer needed to the south of this parcel, there may be additional site area available for this housing. If there is, it will be explored during Phase 2 of the campus development. Should an increase in density or height be proposed to deliver more housing units, it will be subject to a future CD1 amendment application and separate approval by council. While there are not a lot of details about the housing at this stage, staff feel that it is important that this north parcel be included in the current CD1 rezoning as it implements an important requirement of the policy statement. implements an important requirement of the policy statement. The rezoning application was reviewed by the Urban Design Panel on three occasions. The advisory panel had comments about the overall massing of buildings on the site and on articulation, given the massive size of some of the proposed facades. The panel also made suggestions about the proposed open spaces. In response, the applicant made a rather significant revision to the public plaza proposed near the entry to the Healthcare Boulevard, which the applicant will tell you about in their presentation. The revised application was presented to the panel in July and received unanimous support then. In addition to the typical form of development conditions and the new CD1 bylaw which we use to set the building heights and the maximum floor areas, staff have developed design guidelines to accompany the bylaw. The intent of these guidelines is to provide further direction on the expected performance of all the buildings and outdoor public areas, and they will be used to help the future design teams during the development permit process, noting that there will be at least 10 separate development permit applications. A draft of the CD1 guidelines are in Appendix D. Should the rezoning application be approved, the final guidelines will be brought forward for council approval at the time of CD1 bylaw enactment. There were a number of other policy objectives laid out in the policy statement. The large site is subject to the rezoning policy for large sustainable developments. This document has eight sustainability goals and the application has demonstrated to staff that the proposal will achieve all of them. Two major ones for St. Paul's are green mobility and low-carbon energy supply. For green mobility, the applicant has provided a draft transportation demand management plan which details how they will strike the right balance between providing adequate parking and encouraging staff and visitors to use other travel modes. For low-carbon energy supply, the applicant proposes to connect to a city-owned neighborhood energy utility such as the one existing in southeast Falls Creek if feasible. It is critical for our hospitals to maintain in operation after a disaster. The new St. Paul's site is located in a flood plain between 3 and 5 meters above sea level and is at high risk for seismic and liquefaction events. The hospital building will have a minimum flood construction level of 5.0 meters and staff have further recommended 5.4 meters if that's feasible. Staff have also identified several other flood-proofing conditions that will be further developed during the development permit process. For seismic risks, staff will apply the higher standard of either the National Building Code or the Vancouver Building Bylaw. A multi-hazard and vulnerability assessment will be undertaken during the permit review. As part of that review, which will cover seismic and flooding events among other hazards, a five-member panel of experts will be convened to provide support and advice to the project. The rezoning conditions require that Providence enter into a community benefit agreement with the city, consistent with city policy for large development near downtown east side. This agreement will include ways that the campus development can benefit the local community through favorable hiring practices, social procurements, supplier diversity, and local purchasing. The agreement would apply during the construction and for the ongoing operations of all the buildings on the campus. The applicant will work with the city and local social development agencies, community members, and host First Nations to develop this agreement and to assist the applicant with meeting the agreement's targets. Finally, the new hospital will support Indigenous peoples' health and wellbeing. Providence Healthcare is committed to engaging with the Indigenous communities on the future design of the buildings and open spaces as well as the overall healthcare practices. The current St. Paul's Hospital has an Aboriginal health team that provides key cultural services. The new hospital will offer more spaces and extended services to that team. There have been several opportunities for the public to participate in the planning of the new hospital. The policy statement phase had an extensive public engagement for the rezoning application and open house was held in November 2018 attended by about 170 people. From the public, we heard concerns about building articulation in open spaces which were echoed by the Urban Design Panel. The level of detail submitted in a rezoning application for a large institutional site is always less than what people are used to seeing for a single-site, commercial or residential rezoning. As such, it is a challenge to be asked to comment on the form of development as it generally appears as block-massing in the application drawings. Staff are confident that the CD1 guidelines will provide the direction needed to ensure that the more detailed architectural response at the permit stage will address building articulation effectively. On the open space comments, you will hear from the applicant about the big move they have made with regard to the central public plaza, which we feel will deliver a much more meaningful public realm experience. The CD1 guidelines will also provide direction for the detailed design of all public open space on the site. Traffic congestion and parking impacts are understandable concerns given the size of the hospital. A major driver in the selection of this site for the hospital is its access to the city's arterial road network and to the regional transit system. Given the green mobility plan and the right approach to parking, these impacts can be minimized. We heard from residents in the buildings along Main Street adjacent to the site that they were concerned about the treatment of Station Street. This block of Station Street is an existing 100-foot-wide right-of-way but looks and functions much like a back alley. The new buildings to be constructed in the west parcel will be required by the CD1 guidelines to present facades and interfaces that contribute positively to Station Street. The street itself, given its wide right-of-way and local street function, has the opportunity to be designed with park-like features while still accommodating vehicular movements. Lastly, we heard about animal testing. Specifically, we heard a request that the city use its regulatory powers in zoning to not allow animal testing to occur on this CD1 site. The city does not currently regulate animal testing, which may occur wherever laboratory use is approved. Animal testing for medical research purposes is regulated by senior government levels. Staff reviewed with Providence the regulatory framework under which they operate in conjunction with UBC, and we are satisfied that the practice does not need to be regulated at the municipal level. As the city does not currently have a policy on animal testing, the CD1 bylaw that is before you tonight does not allow animal testing. Or does, sorry, it does allow animal testing. Okay. This slide identifies the expected public benefits that will be achieved through the rezoning. There are two childcare facilities proposed at 49 and 69 spaces. These will be secured through a childcare agreement. The rezoning will also deliver significant public open space including the St. Paul's Plaza, a wellness walk, a healing corridor, and the hotel forecourt. In addition, there is the community benefits agreement. The site is subject to development cost levies and public art. Given the size of the site and the amount of the floor area permitted, the total amounts in today's dollars is $97.6 million, which will be delivered with each building permit over the 20-year build-out period. So, that concludes the staff opening remarks, and I think we're going to hear from the applicant team, and after that, there are numerous staff present to answer questions. Clerk, if we could have the slides from the applicant?
Nope. I guess maybe there's another file? Okay, just a moment, please. There it is up in there.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jeff Pike. I'm an orthopedic surgeon at St. Paul's and a physician lead for clinical planning. Over the next 25 minutes or so, three of us from the St. Paul's team will take you through a bit of the history of St. Paul's, the master planning to this point, and some discussion around resilience and sustainability moving forward. The first thing to point out is the long history that St. Paul's has had in Vancouver. In 1894, the Sisters of Providence arrived in Vancouver, almost 125 years ago, coming up to our 125th anniversary in a few months. When they started, it was a small hospital and really truly serving the west end and the local populations right around it. And over the course of 50 years or so, really started to evolve into something much bigger than its humble beginnings. In 1956 was the first made-in-Canada heart-lung machine. 1977 was the first pulmonary research lab that had global impact around the world. In 1990, as many here will recall, was the AIDS and HIV crisis. And it was at St. Paul's with Julio Montaner and his colleagues who really took on the challenge and revolutionized care really truly around the world. 2005, that's John Webb pioneering around percutaneous heart valve replacement, again, something that's had a global impact. 2010, the harm reduction strategies in the downtown east side, many of which were pioneered by our colleagues at St. Paul's as well. And so, here we are in 2019, and the question is, you know, where do we go from here? It's a very exciting point in the history and legacy of St. Paul's in Providence, and this is a huge opportunity for all of us who love the city and love the province. Building on our components over time, it's really always focused on patient care and the experience of families and patients. People and standing up for what they believe in and what is important to them has been important from our beginnings as well. And a sense of discovery based both through research and through inquiry with patients has been important and led to many of the innovations that have had a lasting impact to this point. Also, populations of emphasis. St. Paul's in Providence was one of the first organizations in B.C. to recognize that to focus on individual patients, we had to look at whole groups of populations with specific disease processes as well. And so, with that in mind, it starts with our vision that is always focused on compassionate care, what it means to engage our learners in teaching and research, and an opportunity to reimagine what a healthcare campus and hospital should look like in 2019 and beyond. It started really meaningfully in 2017 with the Falls Creek Flats Plan which articulated the high-level plan which really fascinatingly for us connects us to the creative campus, most notably Emily Carr. As healthcare is increasingly digitally focused, the opportunity to liaise with the digital world in a really meaningful and physically connected way, I think will have an enormous impact on the city and our opportunity for making economic impact in the region as well. There are three major components that I think are worth keeping in mind about why this opportunity is so special. The first is that this is undeveloped land. We're not dealing with an add-on or an additional wing or dealing with roadways and all of those typical constraints for almost every healthcare project in the province. And the fact that it's in an urban environment, this is truly the last time that we are going to see this opportunity where building a health campus from the ground up in an urban environment without those constraints in an undeveloped location is truly unique. Secondly, is the unique role that St. Paul's plays. As I mentioned, there's deep ties to the community and where it resides, to the west end, to the downtown east side, Strathcona and the central city. But as important as those populations are, we have a very important role provincially with cochlear implants, with heart transplant, which are the only programs of their kind in the province. And so, we have this dual role of serving our local population where we have close ties and having a provincial impact as well. And then, the focus is always on patients and families which underpins all of this. Just to give you a sense of where healthcare is shifting, the current model and certainly until recently is focused on a predominant flow of services towards acute care. The hospital has been the first and last place to seek care in most instances. And what does that meant? Well, it's meant inadequate and inconsistent coordination and communication, generally an over-reliance on acute care, and when there's unscheduled problems, typically that means a trip to the emergency department. In the future, we think this is going to be different. This is going to be really focused on reversing that flow and focusing care on the primary care networks where family practitioners and community services closer to home will be located, and focusing on using our experience and our enterprise to really strengthen the primary care networks, not work in opposition sometimes as it happens. We think in the end, this is going to mean much better care, much more timely care, and a much better use of resources. So, that means taking these target populations, some of which we've already articulated in the past, and really focusing where are we struggling? And that focuses really around mental health and substance use, the frail elderly, complex chronic care. Surgical and procedural access continues to be a problem. Indigenous peoples has had inconsistent and inequitable care over the last century. And saying, how can we make a difference in those populations? And really, for us, there's a few different ways which we don't have time to get into here, which through steady engagement across our services, across the people that we serve, the people within our own communities, have helped us articulate different and new models of care, which in the end gets down to some buildings, which includes the Core Hospital, the other components like a clinical support and research center, all of which are tied closely to the community. Secondly, a major shift that we'll see is something that's relatively new, and that's really system partnerships. So, it's not just about health services in the traditional way of a hospital and doctors and nurses. Increasingly, this is going to reach into connections with the academic institutions, SFU, UBC, Emily Carr, UVIC included in that, as well as industry partners who are out there trying to make better solutions to problems around digital health, biotech, and pharma. This is our opportunity to come together as an entire ecosystem in healthcare and make a massive difference by shifting how we relate to one another and how we generate solutions for the problems we see today. In the end, we think this is going to mean more resilient and flexible use of the resources that we are spending every day. Finally, this is just one overhead shot that includes the downtown core and the end of Falls Creek, Strathcona. This is really us looking at our local network. And throughout what we can see there, there's a hub-and-spoke nature to the way that we believe we should be operating in the future, not as the place where everybody comes necessarily, but how we reach out into communities and primary care networks to support them. That's going to mean greater connections and better relationships than we've had to this point, but it always goes back to our humble beginnings where we started as a small hospital in one small part of Vancouver. So, at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Tony Gill who's going to take us through some of the master plan elements.
Well, I appreciate this opportunity to present the master plan to you. As noted, I'm Tony Gill with IBI Group Architects, and we've been working with Providence Healthcare and the city staff to ensure that we do have a master plan that meets not only the Providence's objectives but also those of the community. One of the things that we need to begin to understand is, as Jeff noted, there's a lot of program services that are being provided, and one of the things about a healthcare campus is it's a very unique building typology. It's not like something we see all over the city, so it has very unique functional requirements and adjacency flows and things like that that we have to consider. And while we're considering all those things and looking back at what the community needs are, we want to be able to ensure that the master plan addresses the streets and the context around it. So, we have repaired the grid and we've looked at how our open spaces and our public spaces kind of connect back to the adjacent space, and I'll show you here on the next slide. So, when we begin to look at the network around us, there are the parks adjacent to us, including Trillium Park, Thornton Park, and also to Falls Creek. We have roadways and networks and pathways that all connect back to those and trying to find permeability through the site. And in that process, we are repairing that street grid and allowing the flows to continue through. And... through and ensuring that the public realm is addressed and enhanced. As mentioned earlier, one of the key things that came out of urban design panel and discussions with the city was creating a great plaza and creating a civic presence. And one of the key things that we did here is at the corner there, you can see it in the large square, we pulled the buildings back to enhance and enlarge the civic presence there. Unlike Thornton Park or Trillium Park, this is a very unique opportunity to create a civic presence, not only to address the main entrance to the hospital, but also to have an opportunity for different types of activities, such as the Lights of Hope. And here's a high level kind of concept that shows those opportunities. And that is also facing south, so it gets plenty of sunlight. And it is also similar and maybe a little bit larger than the art gallery plaza. One of the other key important aspects of connecting back to the community was making sure that that public realm with the grid is connected, but that there are pathways and walkways that can connect through and have continuous loops. And as you can see here, one of the key loops that we have is the Wellness Walk, which is in red. It also follows the historic shoreline along the north side there, again, connecting to Trillium Park and back to Thornton Park. This is also an opportunity for the people that live in the community, but also for the patients and staff that are using the facility. As we continue to look at these public realm spaces and walkways, we ensured that they were wide. They allowed for multiple types of uses, including bike paths, areas of respite, places for art, again, not only benefiting the people at the hospital, but also for the community at large. We've also created a high street and a very active street, bringing restaurants, retail, other kinds of activities to further support not only the hospital, but also the community So working with the city staff, we started to develop design guidelines, ensuring that a high quality of architecture would be presented to, back to the community, that there is some articulation of the building form, that we're respecting and addressing the Strathcona residents to the north, and that there's a stepping of the building in that direction. So that transition of scale also towards Trillium Park was important to us. And again, we're all addressed within the guidelines, including respecting the view counts that were discussed earlier and shown to you. The transportation system was carefully looked at. We had to ensure that there were multiple areas for vehicles and trucks to move and cars to come, and also protect and ensure that those walkways, including the Wellness Walk, were still vibrant and capable to not conflict with the other vehicles. So you'll see multiple loops and circular rounds around to ensure that traffic continues to move through freely, while the Wellness Walk and the other pedestrian realms are enhanced and protected. With respect to the resilience of the building, one of the key things that we've looked at is that this site, when studying it, we used a FEMA P-58 assessment tool to model the design and to set the resilience performance expectations. So this is no different than what we would do on any other facility within Vancouver, ensuring that it meets the highest standards of the code and that it is a post-disaster building. So I'm going to turn it over now to Angie. Angie will talk about sustainability and climate resilience. Thank you.
My name is Angie Wu. I'm part of the Energy and Environmental Sustainability Business Unit. It's an internal resource that has served Providence Healthcare, Vancouver Coastal Health, Provincial Health Services, and Fraser Health since 2010. Our Climate Resilience and Adaptation Program works with health project teams to identify opportunities for building climate resilience over time on health campuses and in their communities, including for PHC here in Vancouver and from Richmond up to Bella Bella for Vancouver Coastal Health. We use information about our future climate to better understand climate impacts on our critical systems, supplies, and infrastructure, and cascading impacts on our workforce, patients, and the communities we serve. This is a complex, challenging, and evolving discipline. There's no prescription for this. It requires a multidisciplinary, long-term, and iterative process that begins in the early planning stages and extends through to the end of a health facility's useful life. Working closely with city staff is key to developing sustainability and resilience strategies that are fit for purpose in our new climate reality. In short, we're planning to 2050 and building in flexibility to 2080. So far, our work has included co-designing and delivering a climate risk and resilience workshop, applying the most updated climate information in pursuit of new lead resilience credits, and providing input into design and construction specifications for the design-build In our workshop, we identified five areas to explore together with the indicative design team, clinicians, and city staff. Support staff wellness and productivity during climate shocks and stresses, accommodate increases in hospital visits from communities, extend backup power, anticipate supply chain disruptions, and address extreme heat, wildfire smoke, and coastal flooding. Together, we reviewed and proposed measures to strengthen resilient design and operations, strategies that are aligned with city rezoning requirements. For example, health-promoting building design using enhanced indoor air quality strategies and low-emitting materials, outdoor spaces for health and wellness-oriented community use, building energy performance that exceeds city rezoning requirements, extending backup fuel capacity for our backup systems, requirements for all infrastructure connections to existing resilient networks and new pathways that circle the site with multiple redundant connections to the hospital and campus. These were developed in collaboration with city staff. In addition, partnerships with local food suppliers and purchasers as part of food system offerings, spaces on the roof and mechanical rooms reserved for future equipment upgrades to meet 2080 temperature projections, dramatically higher number and types of trees on site with emphasis on species that are native, reflective of the local climate, and optimized shading of south-facing areas, backup air filters, locating critical mechanical, electrical, and communications equipment above five meters, rooftop gardens, green roofs and blue roofs to help capture rainwater, and finally, rainwater harvesting systems for utility water to chillers and boilers. We look forward to continue working together to take our preliminary strategies to the next level through detailed design, construction, and operations.
Thank you very much for your attention. Just a final word, you know, for me, someone who grew up in Vancouver, was born 300 meters from here, I feel strongly that this opportunity that we presented to you is very unique and in our lifetimes is not going to be one that's going to come through this room again like this. We're really excited about what it's going to mean for our patients as we look to transform the way patients experience care and the outcomes that they receive, as well as, I think, an enormous economic impact to the city that has been unprecedented to this point in many ways. Much of it relies on our ability to integrate with the community and with the primary care networks that I mentioned, and we look forward to the next phase in planning.
Thanks. Is that it for the presentations? It is. Okay, great. Thank you very much for all that. We're going to move to questions, but before we get there, I'll just say, I know council is incredibly excited about what we're looking at here today. We've just been through a long day, so you'll have to bear with us as we kind of get our minds around this huge and very important project. So I'm just wondering if councillors now have questions for staff or the applicant team? And again, this is the point where you'll talk to the applicant, and then after we hear from the public, you won't be able to ask questions to the applicant. So if you want to ask questions to the applicant, you should do so now. And we have councillor Hardwick. Up to five minutes, please. You don't have to stand.
Mr. Naylor? From IBI Group, please. Oh, not the architect. I'm sorry, was it, oh, Mr. Naylor? Did I get that right? I'm sorry.
With city planning.
That's right, sorry. You went one after the other, and I had it, anyhow. Are you familiar with other plans in the past for this land prior to the current plan for St. Paul's?
I am.
The reason I'm asking is I was involved going back to the mid-'90s in a plan to put a film studio on the place, which in fact IBI Group was involved with at the time. And we were looking at use of the land, which was largely industrial, but partially looked at some live work at the time. And we were encouraged at that time to look at those uses because of concerns about the land and the fact that it was not considered to be stable and a mud flat. And so it's always, in my understanding, been concerns about that land and its stability. And so, and again, I bring up this former use, industrial use, because we were warned about it at the time. So knowing that, how did we get to the point of looking at putting such a sensitive activity as a hospital on what may be unstable land?
I think the condition on this particular site is the same all the way across the Falls Creek Flats. And over the last 20 years, we have seen a number of buildings constructed in the flats. So I think, I'm not a structural engineer, but I think it is possible to build buildings there. And I don't know if one of my colleagues wants to address the actual hospital there, but I think that whatever happened when you were involved in this in the 1990s, we've moved on and we can build quite substantial buildings in the flats.
So the answer then, so it was 1996, actually, but so the answer is that our building technology is today more advanced than it was 20-odd years ago?
That's out of my league. I can't speak to that.
Mark Dagnall with PHC. So, oh, senior manager with our design-build team with PHC. We have structural engineers and geotechnical engineers working on our project. And we've modeled it. What will happen is we will remove all the liquefiable soil from the form of development. Maybe the form of development in 1996 was slightly different than this. We'll be developing three stories underground to be on glacial till. This site is a Class C site geotechnically and perfectly average, not, the seismic risk is no greater than any other well-founded building located in Vancouver.
Even though it's on infill?
It'll be resting on the glacial till below the infill.
Okay, well, I'll look forward to that. I'm sure that there'll be significant due diligence around this.
There will be.
Thanks so much. On to councillor Carr.
Yes, thanks so much. What's the life expectancy of this facility? Hi, Rhonda Louis. I'm the senior, I'm the associate director for the design-build of this redevelopment project. The typical building life cycles is 60 years, but as you can see, the current building itself is 125 years old, so we often last a lot longer than we expect.
Okay. Have you or our staff done the projections based on any of the new climate science around the expected sea level rise over that 60-year period, which would take us to 2080 or 2090, depending on when the hospital's done?
That's a bit out of my realm.
I mean, I know what the government is saying, it's 0.9 meter, but that's, climate science is changing rapidly.
Hi, sorry, there's two Angies who work on adaptation in the crew here. So my name's Angela Daniluk. I work in adaptation to sea level rise for the city of Vancouver at the Sustainability Group. Myself and my colleagues have been working closely with Angie and PHC on this question about the projections for sea level rise. And we've been, right now, our planning standard is 1 meter by 2100 and then 2 meters by 2200. The latest IPCC and national estimates on sea level rise for the Pacific West Coast is still in line with that range of 1 to 2. And so we've baked in that information into the rezoning condition around flood construction levels.
Okay. Before the building will actually get going in any substantive way, I imagine, there's going to be the next intergovernmental panel report, the next major one.
That one will actually drop sometime in 2024, and so we anticipate that the information from that report will be downscaled to Canada and then to the Pacific region somewhere around 2030. So I am in conversation with scientists at INARCAN and who write for IPCC. And they say, again, it's 1 meter, between 1 and 2 meters is the place to be. So when we work with applicants, we, one of our main principles is flexibility in adaptation to sea level rise, and so that's why we recommend planning for 1 to 2 meters.
Okay. Well, I hope you're right. During the public consultation leading up to the council's approval of a policy statement, and I attended a number of those meetings, Providence actually, and maybe this is an answer by the applicant, assured the public that some healthcare services would be maintained in the West End. So I want to know what the status of decision-making is around the retention of healthcare services, especially to some significant populations, seniors in specific, and people involved with HIV/AIDS in the West End.
So thank you for the question. I think the first thing to say is that there's been significant changes actually in the last two years since the policy statement was first passed. The first major thing is Urgent Primary Care Center. That's currently in the West End, as well as the former Three Bridges Clinic, which is, both of those locations are now serving extended hours, more community services, which includes more than just the typical kind of 8 to 4, 8 to 5 hours for a primary care center. Both of those sites are, again, in the model, as I demonstrated, is now becoming more and more integrated with acute care. So they're not standing alone, whereas in the past, in many instances, they did. The future is really an integration of a network that links the acute care services with urgent primary care centers, such as the one now in the West End. That will only increase, and with the increasing use of virtual health and technologies that allow for folks to have care actually within their home, or frankly, wherever is convenient for them, the level of service close to home is going to increase in the West End by virtue of the network that we are hoping to be driving as we move forward.
Thanks. I have one last time for one last question. There's 75 dwelling units in the health employee housing. How many staff are intended or expected at the facility?
So we have daily staff loads of about 2,200 people.
How much?
2,200 daily staff load.
Okay. That's all I have time for. Thank you.
Thanks. On to councillor Swanson. Thanks. On to councillor Swanson. Don't need to stand.
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff a question. In my pre-council life, I attended some of those consultations about St. Paul's with other folks from the downtown East Side. And our main concern was the impact that the new hospital would have on gentrification of the SROs. And yesterday, I pulled this off the internet. This, it's an ad for the Arno Hotel, which is on, I think it's on Georgia. It's for sale, and it's an SRO hotel with 34 units in it. And it says, located 2 blocks north of the new St. Paul's Hospital and Falls Creek Flats OCP. And it says, prime by all definitions, located in the preferred 200 block of East Georgia. The subject property is strategically located to capitalize on the city's tremendous growth, as just 2 blocks south will be the new $1.9 billion St. Paul's Hospital.
Move to the question.
So the question is, what is the city and/or the proponent doing to protect SRO residents from gentrification, eviction, and homelessness because of a new building like this going in?
Evening, Mayor, councillors Tom Wankland, Senior Planner Downtown East Side. Absolutely correct. We've been very concerned about the benefits that are being brought to the city and to the province at the same time as bringing potential impacts and gentrification challenges to the area. And the concerns that were raised by councillor at the time of the policy statement were taken very seriously. We participated and arranged and paid for consultant to do a social impact assessment, which highlighted a number of challenges that would be faced in the vicinity of the hospital. And as a result, we prevailed upon the policy statement to include a requirement that there be a substantial hotel development made available inside the walking distance of the hospital as one means of mitigating against such an impact on the local SROs. Further to that, despite the fact that the area was mixed employment zoned in I3, we recommended that in the policy statement that there be at least 75 dwelling units permitted to provide for visiting researchers and intelligentsia who would be engaged in the hospital. On top of that, of course, there is the SRA bylaw that is in place in an effort to try and protect the SROs against the change that's occurring in the city.
So, that's fine, but the hotel, the hospital isn't even built yet, and it's already having an impact.
Correct. You have speculators who will do this type of anticipation of the future.
These are pretty, these are some of the better, cheaper, more well-managed privately-owned SROs. They're being advertised as micro suites, not SROs. I mean, as soon as they get rid of a tenant now, they're going to be $800 to $1,000 a month with the bathroom.
Again, we're on questions here, so if you have additional questions.
Yeah, I'm just...
Thank you, councillor.
Hoping there's something else that can be done.
Thank you. On to, if that's it, councillor Swanson again. Okay, point of order. Okay, just one second here. But you, go ahead councillor Agentova.
Thank you. Just before you start my time for my questions.
Yes.
My point of order is, I just heard the wording, "I hope there is something else that can be done." And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but you're in a quasi-judicial public hearing. It's quite a large project, huge expense to the applicant, many years of staff work and applicant work, and if...
So your point of order.
My point of order is, if someone said, "I hope something else will happen," before they've heard the evidence, is that a bias? Is that, I'm trying really hard to understand.
Yep. We're sort of moving in debate a little bit, and we'll get that later.
The point of order would specifically be, can we tell someone what to do on their land, or are we just here to look at the project that's before us?
Not really a point of order. However, I will take your point, that often we drift into policy discussions here. And my job's to steer folks back to the, to the main proposal at hand. However, you know, this is a huge proposal, so I'll keep my ears open, but I think as long as we try to contain it to the project at hand, we'll be better off.
Thanks.
So over to councillor Agentova.
Okay, thank you very.
Four, five minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I know that this has been a lot of work, and I remember last term, even before, some of the other pieces that have come forward to us this term, looking at moving forward with this, hearing from Providence Healthcare, hearing from our staff. Now that we're in public hearing, and I understand that there are different components that we, that will be dealt with at different times, specifically looking at where the location is, and considering it is outside of downtown, I'm wondering if, and I'm not sure who to direct this question to, emergency services and being able to access this, the ambulance paramedics, the BC ambulance service, considering some of the transportation, policy decisions that council has already made that will impact this specific site and location. I was hoping that there could be some feedback to council on, on any consultation with the ambulance paramedics as to how you would serve people in the downtown core and get them to this facility, considering the current planned transportation. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, at first I can say, I mean, as you would expect, I think, is that there's been tremendous engagement across all parties, including the emergency services. The majority of our emergency ambulance drop-offs to St. Paul's currently is from the downtown East Side, and this means that we're closer to that location. A tremendous amount of consultation went in really around 2016 and '17 around the preferred routes, which was why the emergency department has been positioned where it is on the north side of the current planning, to essentially rationalize the routes and have the least impact on the committees where they'd be accessing the hospital. So it's been many years and many, it's not a single engagement. This has been a relationship with my colleague, Maryam Stewart, who's a chief clinical planner, meeting regularly with emergency services to bring them along as with many parties along with the planning.
And right now, would you say that there are, is there any feedback that you can share with us right now as to any, any input you've had from them as to this location specifically, and their ability to access it from downtown?
It was their preferred location, just in terms of ease of major thoroughfares and where the new arterial was planned and is close to. So they're satisfied to this point.
Thank you very much. Also, on the question of affordability, I'm wondering, when we look at, and I know this is the only opportunity I have to ask questions of the applicant, in looking at your current facility and your limitations, and we heard about that in the presentation, definitely see that in the policy report, wondering if this, can you give me on average how many more patients you'll be able to serve at this location? And will you be able to expand beyond what you have right now for department?
Yes, we think we can do a lot better. I think that it comes down to really specific things, reducing away time for care, seeing in the hospital the complex and the patients who really benefit from multi-person, team-based care in a way that really, again, reinvests in the community. So as much as this is about the new St. Paul's, it's really about a system of care in which St. Paul's is participating and supporting care in the primary care networks.
Thank you. And then while you're there, hotels. Current St. Paul's, close to hotels, not going to go into affordability, but there are some hotels in the vicinity, a number of different options. Is that a concern or something you're planning for, looking to co-locate with a hotel? I know we're looking at this site specifically, but I also hear from you that you're not just serving people in our city, you're serving people from around the province and potentially outside of the province. So I'm wondering if that's a consideration that's been made for family that's coming to stay?
Yes, certainly. I don't know if the city wants to comment on this as well, but certainly on the, on the site, as part of the, the planning for the site, rezoning includes a Suites Hotel, specifically targeting patients who, and their families, who need to be supporting care close to the location. And so it's, it's been important. I think you raised this two years ago, and it was a major planning part of our work at that point, and it's still in the works.
Definitely good to have it confirmed here as we're considering this in public hearing, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to councillor Dominado, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this question is to Providence. I'm, I'm just curious about what plans you have specifically around mental health and substance use treatment services at the hospital, and particularly in the context of withdrawal beds, transition beds, recovery options. So from a kind of a living housing perspective, so I just wanted you to comment on what may be planned.
I suppose I would say the first, the first part of that would be, many patients are present to the emergency department in distress, and it's unclear whether it's related to mental health or substance use. And we are trying to meet that complexity at the door, meaning we're trying to plan for patients who are perhaps unsafe to themselves or to others, with a model that receives them in a, in a very dignified way, that has short travel distances from the front door to where they can be safe and assessed from a medical standpoint, and then assessed in a shared way between the mental health practitioners and the substance use practitioners in a secure, close-to-the-front-of-the-emergency location. Then there's the component around kind of housing. We have the hub, which you may be familiar with currently, which is essentially a design to transition patients who are ready to be discharged but don't have somewhere to go. That's also a part of our planning. And there's been, again, tremendous work that is not just inside our walls, but with, with patients, families, and the partners we have in the communities, including the Vancouver Police Department, to help us figure out what that should look like. So it's been an ongoing and still being defined process, but I think a lot of the key principles that have been driven out of those discussions have really been helpful for us to this point.
That's super helpful, because I was really taken by your comments earlier about sort of the opportunity of sort of building a system of care and, and starting really fresh here with the whole campus of care. I'm going to drill down a little bit, just so, and it's been a long day, so I apologize if I'm not clear. I'm just curious about, so we've recently approved rezoning at Clark and First, which is components of social housing, withdrawal beds, Stowbury Centre, short-term transitional beds. We've also had calls from other Mayor Stewart, including talking about campus of care at Riverview. And so I'm thinking about, from the capital standpoint, we were going to have potentially a hotel there, we're going to have potentially rental housing to support employees. I'm just curious about, there's an opportunity to integrate some additional types of transitional beds, care, people who are, you know, going through recovery as well as mental health treatments. I'm just, I'm just curious if that's been explored, because I really think there's an opportunity, given that we are starting from kind of ground zero, we've got nothing built. And this is an area the province is struggling with, is that we don't have enough beds in the province.
I would say, you know, we are planning on managing the sickest, most unwell patients as part of a network. So those that you mentioned would be our partners in that. But we're not planning on long-term recovery beds on the site. It's a part of our network which we'd be very involved with, and is a major part of being able to create capacity for the sick patients that are currently being treated in the emergency department tonight that don't need to be there. So it's a part of the flow and the whole system of care that you described.
Do you think it could be, though? Do you think there's a possibility we could go down that path together, obviously?
Well, we were happy to have discussions around it, for sure. But, you know, we're three years into what we, what we understand the needs to be around acute and sick mental health and substance use cases. But we're happy to be engaged.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. It's something I'm passionate about, and so I'm sort of trying to figure out how we leverage these opportunities. Then I have one more question is around, if I have time. It's just, I'm curious if there was a consideration for flipping it and having the Core Hospital on the south side, I guess southeast, and having the research labs, childcare to the north. And I'm thinking in the context of sort of the neighborhood, but also with the childcare, I don't know if it's going to be serving just employees or serving the neighborhood and the community at large, but I wonder if that was considered?
Many things were considered to start with, and at one time, yes, it was rotated, you know, 90 degrees east to west. The primary reason for switching it was twofold. One, the emergency services access, and secondly, the views and light for most of the bedrooms. By rotating it that way, almost all of the inpatient beds have a view of the North Shore, whereas when it's facing to the east, it was, it was sort of, you know, half and half, so to speak. And so it also meant that that, the site, the Core Hospital, moved closer to the bedrock, which made it a more, less expensive way of solving some of the engineering issues around resiliency.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fry.
Mayor, I'm hoping we're going to have a chance for a second round, because I got lots. But starting with the emergency access, because you were just talking about emergency access, and I'm looking at the map, and I'm a little curious. It seems like a very circuitous route to get to the emergency, especially if you're coming from the downtown East Side. Of course, Dunlevy's only a block long. Jackson is kind of congested. So I'm just wondering, have you folks considered where the optional arterial was to be, having a driveway off the High Street that could kind of contain more of the emergency access through the And I realize that the new alignments are fairly new.
Councillor, Jesse Gressley-Jones with Engineering Development Services. So as you are correct, the, these changes are a result of the decision in the previous council meeting. And the new alignment that connects down off of Dunlevy is actually quite an ideal scenario for emergency access. In the previous iteration, they were coming off of the arterial, which presented some problems. And so this new alignment actually provides a nice quieter street for the ambulances to enter and exit.
Off Prior Street, are they going to come Main Street to Prior to Dunlevy and...?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So, so no, a driveway option within the precinct is not?
I think an additional driveway would cause significant issues for both pedestrians and cyclists. Sort of having an additional egress into the site would pose other challenges that I think are confined when we continue to have it off one access point.
Okay, so since you're here, too, can I ask you about the Transportation Demand Management Plan, which, is that not you?
I'll pass to my colleague.
Okay. I see that it's mentioned in, as, in Appendix B as a, it'll be a rezoning condition requiring a finalized transportation demand management plan, and it seems kind of incomplete right now in Appendix B. Can you tell us what that's going to look like process-wise?
Yeah, so Rosemary Drazkovich with the Transportation Division. So at rezoning, we received a draft transportation demand management plan. This is a requirement for all large sites to provide. That's part of the sustainable large sites rezoning policy. Because of the possibility for change at the DP stage, it is typical to receive a draft plan. So what was asked from the applicant was to sort of itemize what they anticipate that they would be providing for the hospital campus. So some of those things look like increased bicycle parking, bike maintenance facilities, improved end-of-trip facilities, priority spaces for car share, as well as marketing and wayfinding for the site. All those things were...
Yes, I saw 10 spaces for car share, which was sort of a, seemed low, and was acknowledged in the plan as low.
Yeah. So part of the requirement at the DP stage is to further refine the transportation demand management plan. So we've reviewed, sorry, the draft transportation demand management plan, and since then have received a little bit more detail as to how they would provide some of these operational items. So we'd be finalizing and refining those at the DP stage. So part of that is, again, looking at 10 car share spaces and whether or not that's appropriate, but they would have to work that into their parking layout as well, which is also subject...
Okay, so we could add, we could further tease this out. That's sort of all I need to, oh. DCLs. I'm totally running out of time. Got so many. So developer, I see on the DCL targets, what, I mean, I see that it's the Falls Creek Flats Lair DCL, and it's the citywide DCL. How are we going to offset some of the impacts on affordability, public realm, things like traffic calming and road infrastructure? If, you know, the Falls Creek Flats... things like traffic calming and road infrastructure? If, the Falls Creek Flats Lair DCL, as I understand it, doesn't really help the downtown east side or Strathcona or any of the adjacent neighborhoods. It's strictly the flats. So I'm wondering how we're going to target some of these DCLs, because this is such a huge, as councillor Swanson alluded, and as the neighborhood is concerned, this is a huge impact on affordability for this community.
Michael Naylor from rezoning. So there are three DCLs, the Citywide, the Utilities DCL, and the Falls Creek Flats. The largest rate that brings in the most money is the Citywide one, and certainly that money can be spent Citywide for improvements. So...
I'm thinking more local, though, than Citywide.
Within the Falls Creek Flats?
No, within the downtown east side and Strathcona, and the impacts it'll have on affordability and public realm. Can we target these DCLs more directly?
Well, the projects that are funded through the DCLs is through the capital plan process. So to the extent that there are projects brought forward for the downtown east side through that process, yes, it can be spent there.
We're at the five minutes, but you can put yourself back on the list for after. Thanks very much. Councillor Weep?
Yeah, mine's a follow-up on the transportation component of it. The new emergency entrance, you said it's better because it's going off a quieter street, but it's going on a commuter, right? It's going on a smaller street as the boat that we had recently. And so to me, I don't understand, because if you're coming from the downtown east side, you're going to have to go in front of residential houses and then back down. And so I'm just wondering why that was seen as the best alternative.
So the sort of identified issue with coming off of the arterial was actually entering and exiting directly onto what would be, or would have been, a large arterial four-lane route. And so having hospitals attempting to make those maneuvers would pose problems, whereas having them come off of a smaller street with less continual traffic poses less challenges for those ambulances entering and exiting the site.
But they're now going to have to come down Gore, take a left, take a right, take a right, through past a greenway. It just seems very, it'd be interesting to see that transportation plan moving forward, because when you look at this, it doesn't seem like it would make sense for responders to move around the site. Same thing goes with the trucking route. So as we made those changes, just wondering how that route looks on National, and with the plaza and the connections shown to Thornton, what we're looking at on the transportation side with the truckers?
One of the most significant improvements that the overall plan provides is the realignment of National. So the bit of the S bend that you see at the bottom reduces the conflict that we are seeing for trucks that would be coming down Main and wanting to get onto National. Currently, they have to make sort of a right and then an immediate left, which is very challenging to make those movements. And so now with the realignment, we'll actually sort of prioritize and make it much easier to access the hospital on the southern side. And so those truck movements will be logical and obvious. And so the entering and exiting for all of the sort of loading and services will come off of the south side, off of National, sort of away from the residential to the north.
Okay. And then from the energy side, it talked about that they would want to use the city-owned energy, district energy. Is it, is there a deal in place, or what is the actual look at the energy plan for the project?
Hi, Alex Charpentier, Senior Engineer with the Neighborhood Energy Utility. So the plan is to connect the hospital with the Southeast Falls Creek Neighborhood Energy Utility, the city utility. But we are working with the hospital, with Providence, on the best win-win situation for us. So the goal is to find the best way to connect, to interconnect the hospital to our system. The hospital is a very specific building, because it has its own backup power generation, backup heating generation. It will have a lot of cooling, and so wasted from cooling. So it's, for now in the reasoning, it has to connect to us. And as they will work with the, through the design-build process, we will work with them on the best scenario.
Okay. And then last is on kind of the zero-waste component. And as we're moving forward to kind of be a leader in the greenest city across the world, one of the things is hospitals have a significant amount of single-use items and waste. What are we doing to ensure that this hospital is kind of meeting the leading edge of our greenest city goals here at the city of Vancouver?
So the question is, what are we doing to meet zero waste?
Well, I guess, what are we doing to meet kind of the city initiatives to really make this kind of the most leading-edge hospital in the sense of reducing the amount of waste and energy and everything?
Right. So on the energy front, as Alex shared with you, we do, to get high ventilation rates and high air quality, we do ventilate a lot of, waste a lot of heat. But what we do is recapture that heat and pump it throughout our facility and reuse it. So we're reducing carbon, our carbon footprint on that. In terms of single-use items and green initiatives, we align ourselves with the city and collaborate. Our group, Angie Wu, who spoke earlier, is from the Energy and Sustainability, they have partners in the city and work with them to develop strategies to lower our waste in healthcare.
Thanks very much. That's the five. Put yourself back on if you'd like more questions. Councillor Kirby.
Hi. Hi there. I've got a couple of questions, and I want to start by following up on one raised by councillor Dominado that I had, and it was in your target populations. And I didn't see, for example, folks struggling with opioid crisis or addiction. So I just wanted to get some clarity on the answer to councillor Dominado earlier. Is that not identified as the target population? And what I heard from you is that not sort of substantive treatment onsite, but rather referral or direction prior to folks consuming emergency services that might be best served and treated at a different facility or a different way? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, sorry. So we, up there, you would have seen that target population is around substance use, which is relating to opioid and substance addiction and so on.
Okay.
The effort, rather than, it's all part of the continuum of care around this particular entity health problem. And so we tend to see patients in crisis who, it's somewhat undifferentiated whether it's related to substance use or a narcotic or opioid use, or it's related to mental health disorder. Sometimes it's a mixed picture. So the idea is that we tend to be the receiving zone for that, and we are working really hard to define how we manage that at the front door. That means that from an acute part of it, just the emergency and the stabilization unit, which is all at the front door, is geared towards that population, which is difficult to differentiate between substance use and mental health at the beginning. The second phase of that is kind of the sort of step-down part of that is still within the hospital, and it's within that stabilization unit where there's teams of patients and, sorry, teams of providers who are skilled in managing both. So it's not just one or the other. It's a matter of kind of really shared care around some of these populations, some of which need to be admitted to the hospital until they're well, and others can be discharged. And the discharged part means a really robust outpatient program. A part of the planning for the core hospital is a urban health unit, which is essentially outpatient or daycare, which allows access from the front, not from the front door, but from a street access, which is unlike other parts of the hospital. So there's a direct access into a large outpatient area where professionals that are skilled around both substance use and mental health are able to care for these patients.
Okay. But sort of proportionally in terms of focus, less focus and sort of onsite and less there's that emergent need, but a goal to sort of get people into that community-facing care, or...
I would call it, you know, acute, complex, and the kind of stabilization care. And then the next phase is with our partners in the community.
Okay. I appreciate the further clarity, because I think that's very prevalent on everybody's mind with 3,600 deaths in the last four years. So that's really helpful. I want to switch gears onto another topic, and that's really around vehicle access for people that are traveling for use of services or its continuum of care emergencies, not by ambulance, but by their own vehicle. And I hear this a lot, and this sort of relates to some of the earlier questions around the use of access. So just want to get you to recap for me, if I can, access to private vehicles getting into the site for people utilizing services, parking availability, because we hear about this a lot, and even up here with the precinct on, off of 10th, and the focus on bike lanes, that people like that doesn't work for somebody that is infirm or going for outpatient treatment, and they just don't have the same physical ability. So can you give us a bit of flavor on the ability to serve people that can't bike or walk or aren't coming in an ambulance?
Sure. So I think the new network provides a lot of redundancy and sort of available options to enter and leave the site. The new hospital boulevard that runs through the center of the site will be designed for sort of ease of pickup and drop-off. So to benefit of a new sort of broad site redevelopment is that there's sufficient space to have good, effective, and significant amount of pickup and drop-off. So those people who are arriving that are not walking or cycling to the site have a space to do so properly, and access underground parking facilities as well. The other benefit is that for those who can cycle and walk, we are designing sort of safe and efficient intersection designs so that they can arrive at the hospital sort of by any mode as they are able.
Okay. And the ratio of parking or kind of inventory?
Pass that over.
Okay.
Rosemary Dreszkiewicz with the Transportation Division. So the entire site is required to meet the parking bylaw requirements. The whole site requires approximately 4,000 spaces, 2,500-ish of which are for the hospital campus. I'll also note that the developments are eligible for reductions to vehicle parking, given their proximity to transit, as well as with the transportation demand management plan that they'll be required to provide as well. So they will be required to meet the parking bylaw and meet their parking, anticipated parking demands. We'll also be monitoring that over time. Each development permit that comes in after this rezoning will be required to provide updated transportation and parking study to monitor the supply of spaces and ensure that that's being provided.
Great. And quick follow-up, because you had touched on transit. So transit discussions related to transit access on, at or into the site?
So they are within, they are proximate to the Science Center, Science World Station, as well as there are transit stops planned throughout the site as well.
Okay. That's good to hear. And then final question, I think I've time for one more quick one, just relates to, council received some correspondence related to concerns that view cones are impeding the ability to build up and build necessary. And I looked at the different story heights on the models. Has that been a challenge in design, or from your perspective, is that restricting the ability to build sufficient floor space for service?
With respect to the view cones, magically goes up. Yes, there has been some restrictions with the view cones, but also with the healthcare campus of this type, you want to get as many of the programs and services co-located on the same floor as much as possible. So that stretches it out a little bit. But yes, if the view cones had some opportunities in going up, we would probably have taken advantage of some of that.
But do you feel that you've worked around them now, and you're comfortable with where you've landed?
Yes, we feel comfortable with that. And then also, to address your concern with respect to the operations and the traffic flows, because that's come up a couple of times, we really did look at that carefully. And anytime you design a healthcare campus, like I said, this is a very unique typology of a building. So the access routes and the movement patterns are very different than what you would see otherwise. So not putting the access routes and stuff for the emergency department off of Gore was a strategic move, because Gore is a highly active, retail, vibrant kind of street, which engages the public in a different way. It also has an entrance off of Gore that goes into the healthcare campus, that is primarily for people that are coming and picking up, dropping off, and doing those kind of movement patterns. So we want the ambulances to come off of Prior, down that local street, or come down National, up Jackson. So it gives you two opportunities to get to that point without being hindered by the other traffic.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. I just have a couple of questions, perhaps maybe for the applicant and the planners. So we know there's 2,200 folks working on site per day, and I think I've heard a number up to 10,000 workers in total that will be associated with the site. Yet we just have the 75 units in the six-story building. Wondering if we can do more with that one building, or if there's any way we can get more worker housing on site, because I'm concerned of the, you know, if people are living on site, then they don't have to travel by car into the site. Secondly, I guess that's good for now. So somebody want to take a crack at that one? Staff first, perhaps, and then perhaps the applicant?
Thank you, Mayor. Teresa O'Donnell, Deputy Director for PDS. This site is a little unusual in that it's in the mixed employment land use of the regional context statement. So we have carved out a very small portion of the site for worker housing. However, typically, residential uses would not be allowed under this, under this plan designation, and it would require a regional plan amendment. So for that, for that reason, a broader category of uses for residential uses have not been included in this zoning application tonight. And to introduce a number of different types of residential uses would actually require a significant amendment. And I don't believe it would be possible to do that on the floor, council, tonight.
Okay. So we've got the six-story building that has 75 units. What if it was eight stories? It would add a bunch. Is there any possibility of adjusting that one building at all through the process tonight or a subsequent process?
Well, certainly through a subsequent process. We could go back, and we could review our employment land studies. We could look at some additional uses, say maybe in a future text amendment. We could explore that with the applicant. That would be something that the applicant would need, we'd need to partner with them. It certainly wasn't part of this application, but this is a large site. It'll be years in the development, and something we could certainly take a look at in the future.
Great. Okay. I see another. Somebody else wants to take a swing at this one?
Wanklin, just to add to that point a bit further. In the policy statement stage, we were guided by urban design considerations and shadowing. So the building height was specifically as well to take into account the proximity of Strathcona, situated immediately to the north. The other thing about the residential components, we looked at the ability for people to move and commute to the hospital site using transit, bearing in mind that the Skytrain is within two blocks' walk of the site, and capable of bringing as many as half a million people to that area. So I think the relationship between the site, Chinatown, Strathcona, the neighborhoods to the east, Mount Pleasant to the south, and then with the transit link, its substantial ability for accommodating people living in close proximity.
Okay, thanks. And I did, I bought that building. I think, I'm sorry, I can't remember who said it, but it was initially described as perhaps workforce housing, but then it was visiting researcher housing. And they're quite different to me.
I think there is a very specific difference. The concept was that these be institutional homes available to visiting researchers and people, specialists in the, in the hospital industry, not necessarily long-term residents who might be working in the actual spaces.
Okay. So that wouldn't be for local residents, then, like local workers?
That was not the intention, no.
Okay. So really, there's no workforce housing with this site?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, in future, you know, super excited about the hospital and everything. That's great. But am concerned about having 10,000 workers land in this area without any housing. So especially that's, you know, for caretakers and janitors and all the folks that do that work, it's expensive to live around that side, so they're going to be commuting in from afar. So I'm okay tonight, but on future, we're looking at DPs and things as we're going through each individual building. It would be good to see if there's any way we can, we can make that move along a bit. And I'm at my five minutes.
May I clarify one point, Mayor?
Okay.
The 2,200 workers are moving from the Barrow across. I'm not sure where the figure of 10,000 came from, but that certainly would not be accommodated entirely in employment on that side.
Oh, no. No. I understand. But every little bit helps. Oh, no. No. I understand. But every little bit helps. Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Dushinova. Oh, I don't know what happened. I lost. Something happened? Sorry, I've cleared the queue. You have to put yourself back on, folks.
I have some follow-up questions.
Okay.
To that as well. And I feel that as you ask some, I'm going to ask some because I think they're in order. But in looking at, at sort of the livability of the area and, and don't need to convince me that DCLs are waived for community benefit and a hospital is a community benefit. Looking at, at the land use planning of the entire Falls Creek Flats, there are opportunities to do that beyond the rezoning this evening. We're just specifically looking at this site. Could that be confirmed for me?
Yep.
The 18.4 acre site that is the subject of the rezoning application.
All right. Just some of the comments I had heard before were a bit concerning. Also, just was wondering if that was something in the context of what we're considering, and I was here for that, not talking directly about policy, but the impact that it will have. And we're going to talk about gentrification or I suppose it would be more like displacement of rental, depending on how we want to talk about it. I'm going to ask specifically about the possibility of, just as we have heritage density bank, could we have an industrial density bank where perhaps that's transferred or something like that? Just looking at, we have area that's specifically zoned for industrial. Could that be transferred to another area of our city to allow for residential housing to be nearby here in an interest to serve people? And bouncing off some of the questions that were just asked is, this is, this is really important, I think, for people who are working in the area.
If I understand the question, will the, the industrial?
Should we do something similar?
The industrial lands are density for industrial uses. So I don't understand what would be transferred off.
If, if we were transferring off, if, if for instance, we had committed as a city to a certain amount of land for industrial use, and I'm not sure if there may be a policy somewhere where we have, I'm not claiming to know if we have. If we have is, and this is a part of that, the lands that surround this, and that is what is causing us not to be able to move forward with that, could a change be made and could that type of land use density be transferred off to another area? And I'm just thinking maybe something similar. And I know it's not similar. It's not exactly the same, but in using the type of, of method that we would use with heritage density.
I think the way I will answer this is to draw everyone's attention to the plans that have been done in this area. The Falls Creek Flats Plan, which has quite a bit of floor area proposed in it for employment generating uses, plus the Northeast Falls Creek Plan, which has quite a bit of housing in it and is very nearby to this proposed hospital site. And in the Northeast Falls Creek Plan, because it is a large area, it has a requirement for affordable housing. And I believe on the city-owned blocks where the viaducts sit now, there is going to be affordable housing, some affordable housing proposed in there, which could also be considered with the right funding as supportive housing for people who need to be close to, lived close to the hospital.
Okay. I, I understand that nearby there might be, but also very aware of some of the commitments that we've made and wanting to make sure that considering this is a hospital that will serve not only our entire city, but beyond, that we are making sure that, that people have the opportunity to live and work in Vancouver. So in looking at that as one of our policy goals, very specific to this site, are, would this in any way tie our hands to make decisions on land use in the Falls Creek Flats? And I'm thinking residential in the Falls Creek Flats, my mind goes to the letter written by Larry Beasley to council during the Falls Creek Flats planning process. Not talking about the policy right now.
Just 30 seconds.
Talking about some of the issues with residential nearby.
And just 30 seconds left.
The rezoning for you tonight, before you tonight, is just the 18.4 acre site for the hospital. It has no implications for any surrounding lands, only for the CD1 that you had creating in this one location.
We could look at other areas around here or we could look.
Absolutely. Through policy, you could, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. And I'm sorry, councilors, I did clear the queue by accident. So if you have a, another question, please put yourself back on the list. Okay. I would hope we, we just keep it the two rounds. That would be great because we do have a whole bunch of people sitting here waiting to address this application. Counselor Frye?
Yeah. And I've got one question for staff and I've got two for the applicant. For staff, on the transportation front, I note that on the new, the new connection road, there's a weird inverted V where Malkin and Atlantic and the new road meet, which sort of wasn't there before. It sort of dips up to the north.
Where it's swinging up?
Is there a purpose for that or?
So sorry, you're referring to where the?
So where, where the new road meets Malkin, Jackson and Atlantic, right by, north of Trillium Park, it sort of now creates an inverted V and kind of jogs up, which seems to redirect the traffic somewhat? Is that the intent?
So the, the reason for the sort of swoop design is that it creates the best right angle condition of that intersection, which is safest for pedestrian and cycling crossing and allows for vehicles to make the safest turning movements through that intersection. That's why we've tried to sort of regularize the formation of the intersection.
Okay. That's it then. Appreciate that. Now for the applicants, I have two questions. Number one, I know that the St. Paul's currently handles a lot of people from around the province, and we have hotels downtown to accommodate that. What kind of inpatients are we expecting for the hospital? And what kind, can we accommodate them with the hotel that we're talking about building on site?
What kind of inpatients are we expecting?
Yeah. So day patients, outpatient, that kind of stuff, people who are coming down for surgical procedures from elsewhere in the province.
Yeah, there, there probably would be two types. There'd be patients who are coming from afar right before or right after a procedure, or in some instances, a visit for, in a consultation of some sort. And then secondly, it'll be the families for those who are actually as inpatients in the hospital. So there's limited ability for patients to stay, for a family to stay in the hospital.
Do we have a number and, and how much can we accommodate on site? I guess is my question.
In the hospital?
Yeah. I understand there's going to be a hotel component in.
How large is the hospital?
The hotel.
Yeah, sorry, the hotel. Yes.
Yeah. Relative to the amount of visitors we're expecting.
Eighty, 85 suites, so is the, the number.
Relative to the anticipated load that we might expect. Is that going to cover it?
I don't know the answer to that. We could, we could certainly get it for you.
Okay. Because I know currently around St. Paul's, we have a lot of hotel stock and we don't have that in this current location. And I'm, I'm a little worried about what that might look like. Does the Cobalt, does the Ivanhoe, do these current hotels get converted to be hotels for patients and their families?
Yeah, it's an excellent question.
Okay. That's something I flagged quite a while ago, actually, even before getting elected. So I'm a little concerned that it's not on the table, but okay. Second question, animal testing. Now, I understand that in an earlier interview in the Daily Hive with Mr. Hussein Haishaf, that, that, that there wasn't really a decision being made, but, and that it was just going to be research labs. But I read on the National Institute of Building Sciences that an animal research facility known as a vivarium is a specially-designed building type. And animal research, they're, they're distinct from research laboratories because they're more complex and they have different requirements. So when is a decision going to be made in the context of this build? Does this build even need animal research facilities? And as you're walking up, my understanding too is that animal research is sort of being phased out in many respects and we have new alternatives that we're pursuing?
Donson, I'm the Director of the Heart and Lung Laboratories at St. Paul's. What we propose at the new site is a clinical service and research building. And within the research building, to have a small animal facility for strictly mice and rat experiments. And this is, and increasingly, you're right, the, there is a phasing out of certain types of animal experiments. But small animal testing is crucial for us to understand some of the, the pathways and mechanisms of disease and ascertaining new therapeutic interventions that will assist, you know, thousands and millions of Canadians who are across the country. So what we're proposing is a small, relatively focused animal testing facility under the regulatory purview of UBC.
Thanks very much.
And that's already existing at St. Paul's.
Sorry, and we're already at the five minutes. So thanks very much. And we're moving on to Counselor Weep.
Yeah. Couple of quick questions. One was on access to nature and understanding how important it is for mental health. And in the motion we passed to talk about reconnecting Strathcona to the ocean with Blue Way, Green Way. So I'm just wondering how we're really going to create those access to nature components to this project? Access.
Thank you. Kevin Spanz, Development Planner. The applicant is proposing, and we are anticipating, a series of high-performing public open spaces. The wellness walk has been referenced in the presentation, and that's intended to be the thing that sort of ties into the existing pedestrian network in the neighborhood. In addition to that, the plaza is, is another sort of major sort of civic space. And whether or not that's necessarily a reflection of the environment or more civic use is kind of up to future proponents. But what we're anticipating and what we're, what we're providing direction for in the CD1 guidelines is a very high-functioning, rigorously-designed network of public open spaces, publicly accessible open spaces that tie into the existing park infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure within the site.
Okay. Thanks. And then second one's on daylight. We've had studies now talking about the importance of shadowing and obviously on parks and green space as well. And so there is some shadowing in this. I'm just wondering how that was kind of included in the design that we're seeing today? Is the reduction in shadowing on the current green spaces and what we're looking to ensure that there is daylight to as many of the windows as possible?
To the, to the windows? Sorry.
About one for the parks and then two, there's, I mean, it's pretty small corridors in here. So obviously, access to daylight is really important. So I'm just wondering how we're trying to ensure that there's as much light as possible, natural light for this project.
Right. So I'll, I'll, I'll cover the shadowing first of Trillium Park, which is sort of the most impacted by this form of development or the proposed form of development. The shadowing on Trillium Park was, which there is some shadowing, was generally supported and approved by the Vancouver Parks Board. We would not be entertaining any other, any applications that would result in, that is to say, any design development that would result in additional shadowing that wouldn't be then reviewed by the Vancouver Parks Board and approved by the General Manager of the Vancouver Parks Board. In, in early conversations with them, it's highly unlikely that we would see anything beyond what is proposed in this, in this application. And if there was any additional, it would be highly, it would be very marginal and highly conditional. In terms of access to daylight within the building, this is a, a concern on a site like this and with a program like this. There is a, it's a, it's a, it's a dense program within any site. And it's, there are challenges, programmatic challenges that sort of result in, in the building forms that you see. And all I can really say is that, you know, we anticipate through design development that opportunities to maximize access to daylight for people staying within the hospital, receiving treatment in the hospital and working within the hospital are maximized. And, and we look to the applicant teams to come up with inventive ways to secure that. What we're seeing here right now, as the applicant has touched on, is trying as much as possible to maximize views and access to daylight for people staying within the hospital by orienting most of the bedrooms to the north with views of the North Shore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dominado?
This is Mayor. Couple of questions to the applicant and to staff. Counselor Frye already asked my question about animal testing. I did want to follow up on the question around the, the housing and, and the mayor's question around that. And just looking at page 13 of the report, the proposed form of development adheres to the height strategy in the policy statement with the range of heights as shown in figure nine. So my understanding that we couldn't go beyond the six stories that's contemplated there for the, the six-story residential mixed use in the current policy statement? Is that, I just want to make sure I'm understanding clearly, just in, in follow-up to the mayor's question.
So the housing is proposed for the north parcel, which has a 24 meter, 79 foot height limit on it.
Is, is, that's?
Yeah, that's the way it is in the bylaw. And that's in, that's, that, as, as Tom Wanklin explained earlier, it has to do with getting a transition down to the much lower Strathcona neighborhood to the north. It, it, it came about as a part of the public consultation process. Generally, we don't advise council to increase heights at a public hearing because we didn't advertise it that way. However, I will note that in my remarks, I said that there could be an opportunity to revisit this north parcel because we don't have the arterial to the south of it. So there could be land, more land available. And then at phase two, as we look at that, we can also take the question of increased height out to the public and come forward with a text amendment that would achieve more housing units on the north parcel.
Okay. Thank you. It ties back to my question around substance use treatment. So thank you. On the subject of the hotel, do we, will we get some better sense of the later date of there potentially more capacity? I think I heard 80 feet, 85 suites, but I'm just curious if that's something. Hundred and eighty. Thank you. I heard 85. And then a follow-up question on car share. I'm just getting a clarification of the number of spots that'd be allocated for car share and then also parking, which I'm going to venture is charging for parking. And I'm raising the question in the context of, there's been increasingly concerns at hospitals around the province, around people being charged and they're there for an emergency. They don't have time to pay. They get tickets. Is there some consideration for having some parking that would not be, there would be no charge for it? In the, I think you probably know what I'm referring to. There's been cases of people have to say they're dealing with a medical emergency, they're there for several days, the family member who may be quite ill and they forget to pay the parking. They don't, so I'm just curious if that's being contemplated as part of the thing. Hello?
Parking is, Rhonda Louie with the Redevelopment Group. Parking is provincial mandated and handled element. So it's actually out of our ability to deal with, with respects to if it's charged or not. But we do offer at the front valet services. So if you come and you're in distress or you need to get out of your car and help somebody, we, we help with valet and make sure that the cars are looked after.
Okay. But that would be a provincial conversation I should be having if that's.
The valet services?
No, that would. But the other around it?
The charging, yes, is not a.
Pay parking?
Isn't, isn't something that we have control of.
Okay. And car share? Did I, I'm just looking for the clarification on how many spots might be allocated for car share? That's probably a staff question.
I think the TDM showed 10 spaces, partly because we were just too early in the design to be able to address it and to talk to the car share companies and try to get the proper number that should be on site. So it was, it was a number that was picked to say, yes, we want it, but we, we need to look further into what the appropriate number is.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Counselor Kirbyon?
Sure. I hadn't put myself on, but I have one quick follow-up question and just ask it very simply. And that's really around, I think, people with a complex road access, getting their head around ensuring that the very basic premise of ambulances and emergency vehicles being able to get in and out. So for simplicity, can you confirm to us if there's been conversations with ambulance, police and, and discussion around the route? And I realize there's been some changes with the route network. So this is relatively recent. But for the folks that are actually driving in to drop off patients, those first responders, have they been engaged? And do we have a comfort level with this kind of multi-turn route to get in and out?
Yes. The simple answer would be yes. It's, we, we've gone through an indicative design with user groups and, and the emergency management group was a part of that. And we went through frequencies and access and, and everything. And they, they were very comfortable with, with where it was located and where it was put.
Okay. That's really helpful to hear. I know that you would have. It's important, but it's something that we obviously wanted to ask too. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Counselor Hardwick?
Thank you. I had a couple of follow-on questions from earlier. The gentleman that I spoke to that said that the buildings were going to go down to the glacial till. Could I ask you, I've, I've been reflecting on the groupings of buildings over there and the site coverage and. and the site coverage, and we've had quite a lot of talk about roads and green space. You've said that, which buildings will go down to the glacial till level? Is this something that's going to be done, for example, from the hotel? And then what do we do about, again, I'm sorry, I'm still concerned about the under, the land and the liquefaction fear. So which buildings would you in fact be going down? Not all of them, or some of them, or what other mitigation is there for instability on the site?
What other mitigation is there other than to remove the soil?
Well, we've talked, it's not just, so are you saying that you'll be going down on, for everything down to that level?
We're working on the planning of the hospital, and the hospital is located as far north as possible to take advantage of the geotechnical benefits of the former shoreline. So that will make the build less expensive in that area, in the northern portion. The hotel, I don't know as much about, it's a future development. But I would imagine they would have to go through the same process of considering the elements, the soil conditions, and their form of development.
And the surrounding land, roads, green space, again, where the surface where people are operating, if there was an emergency kind of event?
Right, so prior, you're talking about the resilience of the road network?
So we will be looking at the new utilities that are connecting to the hospital and the roads that connect to downtown to be built to a resilient standard so that we do have safe access during any type of event.
Again, the concern being liquefaction. The final question I had was for the gentleman that's from the proponent that was born and raised in the area. Sorry, yes, I'm sorry I didn't get your name.
It's Jeff.
Hi. Were you involved with this project right back to the beginning?
2016, the beginning was probably a long, long time before that.
Well, what I'm interested in understanding is, what prompted the identification of this site? Was St. Paul's in the West End looking to move? It was looking for an alternative location? How was this selected?
Tony in IBI would be better to answer that.
I've actually been working on the site, I know I'm pretty young, but since 2000. Back in 2000, we did a master plan and a study of the existing St. Paul's site and trying to accommodate all their program and services needs. And a lot of studies were done and looking at those opportunities. And one, it wasn't feasible, two, it was almost practically impossible with all the phasing strategies and stuff that had to be done. The land did come available, as you noted before. It couldn't be built on properly, and if I recall from my colleagues, is the reason that that particular client ended up selling off the land was because of liquid, you know, the soil conditions. They were not going to be building a hospital or spending the money that we are now. So with what we're doing today, we can actually go down, we can clean out the soil, we can do a lot of things to get down to that bedrock and create a stable site. Whereas previously, they couldn't, you know, they just weren't going to be spending, they were smaller buildings, not spending that amount of money to do the things that they wanted to do.
I see. So you were working with St. Paul's?
I've been...
You had identified this site quite separately from the past, and you figured it was a good fit?
Well, not just me, it was also a combination of other people that, it's just coincidentally at the same time it came up for sale.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And that's it for questions to staff and the applicant. And now we're going to move to the public speakers on this, and thank you very much for your patience. I'll call a list of names and then, so you can get ready for your number as it comes up. We start with Patricia Kendall, Tamara Kumanyi, Neil Fowler, Paul Hollins, Dr. Don Sin. So, right, and I believe you have a video you wanted to show us?
I do.
Okay, I just want, before we move to the presentation, just wanted to make council aware that this, this is a one-minute YouTube video that has potentially containing sensitive and possibly disturbing imagery. And so we, as a group, just decide whether we feel that's something we'd like to see it is about animal testing, I understand?
I was going to, so because I'm here speaking on behalf of a group, I have eight minutes, so I was planning to speak for seven and show the video for the last minute.
Okay, right. And so I just wanted to bring this to council's attention, just one second, please. Okay, great. So there is a point of information. Councillor Dejeno.
I'm just, I, I understand what you've just told us about the video, or the YouTube video. I'm not even sure what it's about yet.
Animal testing.
Okay. I'm concerned for some of the other people who might be in the gallery, also those who may be watching this via livestream at home and considering, we've already, today in other parts of our meeting, been concerned about people with post-traumatic stress disorder and other issues.
Sure.
Just wondering if maybe there should be an opinion on that, or if maybe council could instead each receive the link and then we could watch it as evidence.
Thanks very much.
Let's ask.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm just going to just try to go for nods. Who's all right with watching, is anybody not okay with watching video? It's a tough, right, and we don't really want folks, and so I think we'll probably pass on the video, but we would appreciate if you sent a link to us, that to us, and then councillors could watch it if they feel so inclined. Thanks very much, but we can give you the extra minute. But also, if you could also identify the three people with your group that you're speaking with?
Right. So I'm here, Patricia Kendall, representing the rezoning for the animals group. There's quite a few people from the group here, but I understand three people, I need to have three people stand for the record and state their names in order for me to be representing them. So I'm just going to ask if any, any three people would please stand up? And how do you want the names recorded?
Right, great, thanks. So we'll need your names, and so we can record you as well, and you won't be able to speak yourselves later because it's all grouped into the eight minutes. So can we have your names as well for the record? Laura Smith, thank you. Emily Lamb. Laura Grabitz. Jeffries. Thanks very much. Okay, so we'll give you the eight minutes whenever you're ready to go.
So the staff has queued up a PowerPoint presentation for me, and I'm not seeing it on the screen, and I also don't know how to advance the slides when it shows up.
And these, are these also, can we also expect these to be fairly graphic? Is that...
No, I wouldn't say so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I can see it on that screen, I thought the screen...
Right, the clerk's just going to help you there? And I won't start your timer until...
So before I begin my presentation, I would like to say, I would like to express my appreciation to council for the service that you provide to the city. And I would also like to state that city staff have been unfailingly helpful and polite to our group throughout this process, so thank you.
Thanks very much. Please go ahead.
So you're probably expecting me to say, I'm here to say, animal experimentation is harmful to the animals. Well, yes, indeed it is. But I also want to really clearly make the point, animal experimentation is harmful to human health. So animal experiments simply...
We don't have the PowerPoint up on the screen? Clerks?
Is it showing on the councillor's screens?
It is not. Okay, thanks.
So animal experiments simply don't work. They have a 95% failure rate. So I will say as someone who's pretty protective of my money, that if my financial investor wanted me to invest in a, in an industry with a 95% failure rate, I'd say, forget it. So there's a list of diseases here, you can see, stroke, heart failure, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, Alzheimer, cancers. These are horrible diseases that affect humans, and in fact, members of my family. All these diseases and more have been cured in mice. But after decades of animal research, they, there's no cures for these in humans. Why? Because they've been testing mice, not humans. So most, many drugs that finally pass animal experimentation, out of that 95% failure rate, there's 5% that finally pass, these have disastrous consequences for humans. So you only have to watch TV at night and listen to the list of side effects to know these drugs are practically dangerous to people. There's a list of drugs here. These were safe and effective in mice, but they were withdrawn from the market, not because of just undesirable consequences to humans, lethal, lethal consequences to humans. These are drugs that were on the market after animal testing. Animal testing also results in the rejection of useful drugs. The healthful drug aspirin, which is even safe for pregnant women, would not have been approved had it been subjected to animal testing, because aspirin causes birth defects in several species of animals. So this raises the question, how many other useful drugs have we lost over the decades that could have cured my family members, your family members, our loved ones, because we've been doing animal testing? Animal testing is slow and expensive, 10 to 15 years, $1 to $2 billion to bring a single drug to market. This is impeding progress in human health. This is a waste of money, taxpayer dollars and donation dollars. These alternative methods are faster and they're less expensive. You just have to look at the picture to see, animals are the wrong model for testing human, cures for human diseases. This elderly woman and her condition of, let's say, Alzheimer's is not going to be cured by a guinea pig. There's too many biological differences. There's so many non-animal testing methodologies available. This little chip, which looks to be about the small, size of a credit card, is a lung on a chip. So if you go online, you look, it was developed by the WIS Institute, that lung breathes. So it breathes, there's so many organs on a chip. Canada has now got something called the Canadian Centre for Alternatives to Animal Methods at the University of Windsor, Ontario. And much of the information, I would like to give credit for the images, text, ideas in this, is from a TED Talk, TEDx Talk, that was given by the executive director of this centre, Dr. Chandrakasara, who has offered to actually fly to Vancouver and come and speak with you, council, if there's ever an opportunity to inform you more about these non-animal methodologies. So four million animals in Canada, and the number's increasing year upon year. How many at St. Paul's? We don't know. There's no limits on the types of animals, there's no limits on the types of experiments, there's absolutely no transparency. If animal experimentation was as safe and caring as put out, as said to be, then St. Paul's should have an open house policy. Families come in, children love animals, why not have open house? Families can take their kids to St. Paul's on a Sunday afternoon, the kids get to wear masks and lab coats, they'd love to dress up. Oh, no, that's not happening. That's not happening. There's, despite what you might be told, there's no Canadian statutes or regulations that protect these animals. There is no BC government statutes or regulations to protect these animals. These animals are without legal protection. Yes, there's something called the Canadian Council on Animal Care. Well, what they make are guidelines, guidelines. Guidelines are like recommendations, suggestions. That is all that these animals have, there's no enforcement, there are guidelines that say, this should happen, it is suggested this happen, we recommend this happen. That Canada Council on Animal Care then delegates decisions to each institution's animal care committee. So each institution gets to pick its own people and create a committee of insiders that are making decisions about animals, care, animal experiments, et cetera. Here's a sample guideline, here's, so here's, an animal care committee should, not must, can't say, must is just a guideline, must include a veterinarian normally experienced in experimental animal care. No, it doesn't have to be, but it would be good if the veterinarian did have this experience. I'm sorry if I'm sounding angry here, I'm just feeling really passionate about this. So the city of Vancouver, I'm standing here, our group is here, pleading with you, urging you, please use this rezoning power to protect these animals. Here's, here's your animal protection power under the Vancouver Charter. You have a power to deal with impounding animals, pounds, muscling dogs, dangerous dogs. After this rezoning is done, the land is zoned, you don't have a power for the next 125 years to help these animals. Don't believe these animals are not feeling pain. They might, they might be given pain medication, but they might not, because this is right out of the CCA guidelines, unless anesthesia and analgesia agents are supposed to be withheld as part of the requirement of the study. Yes, the study could require the animals to feel pain, and the CCA acknowledges, the researchers can't even tell if an animal's in pain. Some non-human primates, rodents, rabbits, may not show behavioral changes even when they're in severe pain. And I will, and I will just note that this is a picture of a beagle dog, and beagle dogs are the most often chosen breed for these experiments, because the beagle breed is exceptionally docile and gentle and well-behaved. So animal experimentation...
We're just at the eight minutes now.
Oh, sorry, did you say I'm out of time?
Yeah, you're just at the eight minutes now. So do you have a concluding sentence or something that you...
So I've written to the city, animal experimentation creates biohazards. And when we were doing a public event on Broadway at the Canada Line Station, someone came up to us and said, there's a new lab on Broadway, and believe me, they don't use animals. They said, the only reason they still use animals is because they're cheap and they don't complain. So I will send council the link...
Great.
...to that 60-second link because, clip, because you will see animals do complain.
Great, and thanks, thanks very much for coming in today. So just so I can explain the parameters of this meeting, it's really, we're bound by law to consider the 18 acres here that is being broadly rezoned to bring a new hospital. We don't, as you, we don't really consider policy at this, at this, at this hearing, actually, we're not allowed to by law. However, you know, this, we'll take all this information on board, but even if we wanted to, at this stage, there's nothing we could do under, under this hearing. This would be a broader thing that council would have to discuss at a, at a different meeting. So it's a little confusing sometimes because we're in council chambers, but this, this hearing is really just for the model you see here, not really the operations that happen within the model, but really the physical form of the model itself and the broad and general use of the buildings. So, so very well, talking to the health authorities, they would be saying what they do in the buildings. And so I'd encourage you to, to also make this presentation to the, to the province, who will be, and making the information available to the, to the proponent of this project, who will be operating Providence.
May I just respond to that?
It's not really a back and forth.
I'm a retired municipal lawyer, so I understand that the public hearing is, this is a bit like a court decision, so...
It is, yes.
You guys are the judge in this case, so after the hearing, you may not, the judge may not make a decision immediately, but the judge certainly can't hear from one side without hearing from the other. So after the public hearing, council is legally bound not to hear from the public, and you will not hear from our group after this, because we understand that, but you must not hear from anyone else about this issue either, without sharing it with our group and potentially scheduling another public hearing.
So my question just at the end is, are you saying we should not proceed with, so really, we're, we should not proceed with this rezoning at all? Or should we proceed? I didn't quite get that out of your presentation.
Well, we're in favor of laboratories, absolutely.
No, no, but the whole, the entire hospital complex that's coming.
Well, we're in favor of a rezoning...
Okay.
...that allows laboratory use, where the rezoning bylaw says permitted use laboratory, or in this case, meditech uses, but without the use of animals.
Okay. And that clarifies it for me, thanks very much. Councillor Dejeno, but you have any point of information?
I just wanted to note that, yes, we are...
I just wanted to note that yes, we are, although we are in a public hearing process-
Yes.
-it's a question of mine, although I understand the correspondence that we receive is publicly recorded online, we will receive correspondence throughout as long as it's sent through the proper channels. So people can send us emails that we, through a specific email address, has to go to all the council. It's in the public record, but if they don't speak here tonight-
Drifting off of point of information.
My question is, is there was a statement made that I'm concerned legally we could be held to if it wasn't corrected, whereas we can't hear from anyone else unless they share their information with this group? I just want to clarify that everything is shared publicly-
Yeah.
-through the public correspondence, but we don't have to take it upon ourselves to share, nor can we.
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yeah. So, so thanks very much for your time here this evening. I don't see any questions for you on the, on the queue. So we'll move on to our next speaker and thanks again for coming in and representing your group. We have Tamara Komynicki. I'm sure, I hope I have that correct.
You don't, but it's okay.
Okay, thanks.
Tamara Komynetski.
Komynetski, wow, that's way off.
Nobody gets it right.
Okay.
Quite all right.
And then Neil Fowler after that.
I don't need to warn you about anything.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Tamara Komynetski. I'm a St. Paul's patient and I'm also a patient partner at the hospital. I also sit on the Ministry of Health B C Patient Safety Quality Council. So this is an organization providing system-wide leadership to efforts designed to improve healthcare delivery in the province. And I fully support the St. Paul's rezoning application. I am a journalist, a communication specialist and a business owner, and I would not be able to do any of this work without my care team. I've had a complex chronic illness for 41 years, rheumatoid arthritis, that is. It affects nearly every joint in my body. I've had treatment, including 14 surgeries to deal with damage in my joints over the years, some in another country, some in another province, and some in other hospitals in the lower mainland. Six years ago, I had a hip replacement at another hospital in Vancouver. Now physically, this was a very successful surgery, but emotionally, my experience was anything but. So when the condition of my right shoulder deteriorated significantly a few years later, I was really lucky to be referred to Dr. Jeff Pike, who you've heard from tonight. This was my first introduction to St. Paul's and it was a hospital that I'd driven by countless times without giving a second thought to. So after having my right shoulder replaced by Dr. Pike and then other surgeries from his orthopedic colleagues on my left ankle and my right hand, unless I have no choice in the future, I will only ever seek treatment at St. Paul's Hospital. The respect, the care and the consideration for patients and families at this hospital is heartwarming and more importantly, it is genuine. Healthcare in general is moving towards a more patient and family-centered, trauma-informed approach and St. Paul's is taking a leadership role in this movement. And I know this not only from being a patient there, but from being involved in, as a patient partner. I sit on more committees than I can count, including planning, planning committees for the new St. Paul's. I'm given the opportunity to share the patient and family perspective based on my years of experience as a user of the healthcare system. So my opinions and my experiences and my ideas are not just considered and thrown away by the people planning the new hospital, but they are advanced forward and they will be adopted into future practice, if they're good ideas, that is. This is so incredibly empowering for me as a patient when I'm used more to being shuffled along from appointment to appointment and from waitlist to waiting room and having medical treatment done to me and not with me. I have many more surgeries to come. Due to my growing business and as a mom of a very busy 10-year-old boy, I have had to keep delaying my left hip replacement at St. Paul's with Dr. Amran. But I do plan to keep my team of orthopedic surgeons very busy. And while I'm thrilled that I will get to enjoy a brand-new building, I am most excited about the commitment that the people of St. Paul's have to actually improving the way that healthcare is delivered. A few years ago, Dr. Pike invited me to speak to the senior leadership team at St. Paul's about my experience with the hospital. I spoke of the warm care that I received and I also acknowledged some difficulties and some frustrations. Every single week, I juggle appointments with one or two members of my eight doctor team, lab visits, physio and imaging of some sort at multiple locations with long wait times, both to get an appointment and then in the waiting room. I pay for parking here, there and everywhere and I wait and I wait and it gets very time consuming, physically difficult as I'm aching and sore and expensive when I need surgery and months of rehab afterwards. This life is dizzying and expensive and maddening. I call what I have impotent rage because it's not fair, but there's no one I can blame. But I think of myself as a fairly positive, motivated and educated user of the system. So if it's not actually working for me, then how's it working for people less privileged than I? I'd like to conclude though with the good news. Always leave on a positive note. The promise and the plan at the new St. Paul's is so much more than a new building or a new campus. Believe me, I love the words world-class facility and I even more love the words private patient room. But this is about St. Paul's leading the movement towards a transformation of the system. The promise and the plan is healthcare that will be more respectful of my time and my ability to access it, that will lead to the members of my team being able to communicate with each other without delay, whose services will be easier to navigate with wait times that are shorter and with so many system improvements resulting in better, safer care for me and others. Any questions?
Thank you very much for coming in. I don't see any questions on the queue, but really appreciate you coming and telling us your story. Thank you. We have Neil Fowler, Paul Hollins, Dr. Don Sin. Neil Fowler?
Really funny, I wrote good afternoon when I wrote-
Yeah.
It'll be good morning soon.
We hear you, we hear you. Please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin my words, I would first like to acknowledge with gratitude that I am a humble guest on this territory. I want to acknowledge that I am on the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil Alito First Nations. I acknowledge this with much respect and gratitude. My name is Neil Fowler. My spirit name is Timber Wolfman. I would like to share this with you in Mi'kmaq, it's P'ktas'ng'genam. And I am Mi'kmaq originally from Nova Scotia. And I've been a humble guest on this territory for 20 years and I've worked at Providence Healthcare for 10 years. And I've been based at St. Paul's Hospital. I'm the team leader now for the Indigenous Health and Wellness Program. I am here today in support of the recommendation that the city approve the new St. Paul's Hospital rezoning. At St. Paul's Hospital, I lead a team of Indigenous health workers that provide Indigenous patients access to cultural support, cultural teachings, traditional medicines in connection to ceremony. The team I lead also coordinates the use of an all-nations sacred space at the hospital. And it lead, and we lead a weekly talking circle for patients, their families, community members, as well as staff. We also help coordinate the First Nations elder support for patients. We're very excited about the new St. Paul's Hospital build. For the 10 years that I have worked at St. Paul's, I have been involved in numerous quality improvement and patient engagement initiatives, as well as our Aboriginal Health Improvement Committee. It was through these and many other patient and family engagements that we were able to hear the voices of our patients who were telling us what improvements we needed to make and any changes that needed to happen to help improve their care while in hospital. In 2012, we hosted a feast and invited patients, community members and local Indigenous elders to come and let us know how we could improve not only our services, but the physical environment that we were in to be more welcoming and to help better serve Indigenous patients. In 2013, we opened that all-nations sacred space in the hospital. In the nearly seven years since, we have hosted a weekly talking circle in that space and hosted many other feasts, ceremonies and cultural events where people have shared with us how we can make improvements in the hospital to better serve our Indigenous patients. Our Indigenous Wisdom Working Group brought forward many of the feedback and suggestions and requests that have come from the community and how we can improve and expand services at our hospital. We have made certain that Indigenous principles have been incorporated in those design briefs. For example, architecture and design elements that allow Indigenous people to see themselves and their culture reflected in the buildings and that it's reflective of the territory that the hospital is also on. We've made sure to request, to request the incorporation of natural elements like cedar, water and traditional medicines. And we have put forward that the new build will have a dedicated purpose-built facilities that better meet the needs of our Indigenous patients. Some of these include much larger, a much larger all-nations sacred space, which will also have access to a commercial kitchen facilities and an enclosed traditional medicines garden and potentially a space dedicated to sweat lodge ceremony. Not only have we outgrown the spaces at our current hospital site, but we hear from Indigenous patients how often our current hospital resembles a residential school. We cannot and do not ignore this fact. We know this to be true and we have done much to help change this where we're able. There's only so much we are physically able to do, to change in our 100-plus-year-old red brick and mortar building. A new hospital build will give us the opportunity to accomplish this. I'm incredibly proud of the history of my organization. I'm inspired every day by the amazing work not only of the Indigenous health team that I lead, but of all of my colleagues and the incredible work that they do for our community every day. I'm very excited about a new St. Paul's that will help us to continue and expand on the services that we provide for future generations. I urge you to approve the rezoning application so that there's no delay in undertaking this visionary redevelopment. Wolaliok, Haichka, OCM, all my relations.
Thank you very much. You do have a question from Counselor Weep. Counselor Weep, up to five minutes.
Thank you so much for coming. A couple of questions here.
Sorry.
Um, first one-
I was trying to get away.
Yeah, I know. Thanks a lot for speaking. The religious element of the hospital, and you talked about the residential schools, how do you see that playing out to ensure that people feel, from all backgrounds, feel welcome when they enter the door of the hospital?
Sorry, can you repeat that question?
I guess from the religious element of the hospital and from your point of view, recognizing that you're trying to make the most inclusive space possible, how do you see that playing out and mostly when we're building a new hospital here?
Well, I think the, the redevelopment plans that I've seen thus far have been really great at making the spaces really welcoming to all people. And I think that we've been very clear about sharing what we've heard from the community and Indigenous patients specifically about what we need to help reconcile the past and help make the spaces more welcoming to Indigenous patients. I don't know if I can, if I'm the, the most appropriate person to speak for all patients necessarily.
Okay, and on that Indigenous one, and you talked about the land and the waters, and this is a really critical wetland for our local First Nations and there was a village just to the right component of it. I don't see a lot of that connection to the land and the waters currently in the design, but can you explain what conversations you had to ensure that the site really reflects the importance of the land and the waters of the site?
I'm definitely not the most appropriate person to answer that question.
No.
I don't, I'm not sure if one of the-
No, but so from yourself, have you had conversations from the Indigenous lands on really ensuring that the hospital has that connection to the land and the water?
It's just your own experience.
It's your own experience. So if you, yeah, I'm just, I'm just really excited. Like you talked about the Indigenous gardens, which is would be amazing, the healing gardens. But we don't see a lot of that in the current design. So I'm just, you're hopeful that there's good conversations that that will be reflected in the new hospital design.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you. That's it for questions. So we have Paul Hollins, Dr. Don Sin, Scott Wilson.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, thank you so much for the time this evening and the energy you're putting into a transformational project for healthcare and for Vancouver. My name is Paul Hollins. I'm a volunteer with the St. Paul's Hospital Foundation. I've been a director of the foundation going back to 2003, and so I've been around this project for a long, long time. I currently am the Chair of the Campaign Executive, who is charged with the responsibility for raising the public funds, the funds from the community that will help support this transformation. I, I stand here today obviously in support of the project and certainly commend the council in terms of their vision and taking it forward. And there's really three ideas I want to land with you here today. And the first one is around the role that the hospital plays today. Today, it serves a very large downtown population with the basic acute care that are required of, of a large and diverse population and a growing population. Two, it provides certain healthcare services that are only available for the entire province in this one location. And the third thing, and you've heard it here this evening, that I think is unique and critical about this particular institution in the fabric of our community, is it provides, and you've heard, world-leading breakthrough innovation. And it's making a difference world, worldwide. It's doing it in a 125-year-old facility that frankly is at significant risk in any kind of an event. And so one piece I think that is real, brings real urgency to this, and the rezoning application is a critical milestone in this, this whole redevelopment, is the need to restore that building so it can fulfill its basic fundamental mandate to the communities it serves. I think that's a real imperative. The second thing I, I wanted to really, I think, make clear, and it's, it's become clear as we've worked on this project, is this more than fixing a problem is a real opportunity for Vancouver as a community. This is an 18 and a half acre healthcare campus. It doesn't exist anywhere else in Canada. The exemplar for this is only a few places in the world where you can bring together innovation and healthcare and research, economic benefits that fundamentally transform a community. You think about a community, you know, the public institutions that we have in a community are some of the things that make a community great are educational institutions, cultural institutions, healthcare institutions. This is an institution that will change Vancouver and will change British Columbia. So more than just a problem, it is a fundamental opportunity to change Vancouver, how it works and its place on a much larger scale. You know, I had the opportunity as part of, being part of this project for a long period of time, is to visit other brand-new, new-build, first-class healthcare, acute-care hospitals in Canada. Montreal, who've made significant investments, Toronto, the same way. And what you can see in those communities is the impact that this kind of reinvestment has in a community. If you look at the McGill complex or you look at the Shum complex and you see how fundamentally it changes in such a positive way, those communities, we have that potential here. And so what I really encourage us to think about is what difference this makes to the community that we're all trying to build. I think the third point I think I'd like to make clear is I've had the opportunity to talk to hundreds and hundreds of people in the course of undertaking this campaign. And what I continue to get is an incredible sense of excitement and commitment to what this can mean. And people want to get on board. People want to make a difference. And if anything, that's evidenced by their commitment to the campaign. You know, we're, we have a campaign target of $225 million. That is the single largest hospital fundraise ever in Western Canada. Today, we're 75% of the way there. And the short and the long of it, that's the community. A community voting with their dollars for something that they think really makes a difference. The project has been around a long time. Rezoning is a critical element of moving it forward. I'd really implore you, act with urgency to move this forward. The sooner we can make it happen, the sooner we make a difference here. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for your time. And there is a question from Counselor Dejanova.
Thank you very much. Thank you also for refreshing my memory on some of the support and, and not just recent support. I know that it's been long, there's been a lot of support over several years for St. Paul's Hospital. Specifically to what you had said about moving forward and just, just thinking about some of the concerns that have been raised here about sea level rise and building safety, the current building, would we be better off in an earthquake here or there? Is it fair to ask you that question? I'll ask our staff that question, but if we're talking about safety-
You can ask the staff and ask the experts. As a layman, I think I know where I want to be. The short and the long of it, but I mean, the engineers will tell you that it's a 125-year-old building parts of it. And one of the economic factors here is dealing with the seismic issues in the existing building, but the engineers can clearly speak to that.
Okay. And of, of course, I will ask that question, but I think I'm looking more at the, the benefit of this and the opportunity. And I know that it's, it's, it's in a league that we often here at the city might not plan. For instance, I know that it took us 12- For instance, I know that it took us 12 years to get a senior centre built for $7.5 million, and the costs were $10 million, and then the funding kept running away if we didn't move faster. Is, do you have a concern that if we don't move forward with this, that, that there could be some concern about funding? Is it fair to ask you that? Just because you had talked about how people are supporting this with their dollars and how they're watching this and the public benefits that this provides, and you don't have to answer my question, but it would be nice to have it answered by someone.
It's a great question. Philanthropists, small and large, want this project to go forward. And one of the number-one questions I get is, how soon can it be built? That's, that, I would say, is the number-one question I get in every meeting I've had is, how soon will we start?
Okay.
That's, if that's, I think...
No, I appreciate that. So, so is it fair to summarize to some of the questions, there were questions about funding for this or funding for that, that our decision tonight will possibly, if that were, or maybe not tonight, sorry, might not be a decision tonight, but our decision ultimately will influence the ability for funds to be raised for this project?
Absolutely. Rezoning is a critical milestone. I, I can, I mean, you, you folks understand this. The community looks for these tangible symbols that this is moving forward, and there are people today who are saying, yes, it's real, right? And every step we move through, and it becomes more real, we get stronger and stronger community support. So absolutely, this is...
People can give their money to many different projects. I mean, there's no...
There's no shortage of need.
I used to work in fundraising, I've worked in development, where if things don't move fast enough, people will pull their, their dollars from that. Is that a concern that you have if things don't move forward with a, with a timeline that's relatively close to what our staff are recommending here?
I, I think a long delay hurts this project significantly. That's the short.
Thank you.
A faster approval, a faster process builds momentum. That's, I mean, it's just that simple.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, councillor Frye.
Yeah, thanks. And I just want to expand a little bit on something when you were sort of, it kind of triggered something with me when you were talking about how this is going to transform communities and trans, and I appreciate that, and I'm super supportive of a brand-new hospital campus, but, but, a big but, we know that these big kind of healthcare projects, you look around North America, you Google, you know, hospital and urban renewal, and it sort of goes hand in hand, especially in the States. We see older, typically low-income African-American-type neighborhoods that will get a big hospital landed on it and really contribute to massive displacement. So I'm wondering, and one of the, you know, I'd asked earlier about hospital or hotel visits and how many visitors we'd have, and I since looked it up on the St. Paul's site, and 380,000 patients from throughout DC a year. That's pretty significant. It's also a huge impact on, on, on a community that lacks a lot of resources, doesn't have hotels, doesn't have rest, I mean, it's going to be a big terraforming thing. So I'm, I'm wondering if you think that, that this project has done the kind of due diligence and the larger impacts on the community and done that kind of outreach component and ensuring that it's, that it, that it's complementary and not displacing folks?
Well, I'll let the experts who've managed a lot of that consultation speak to it, but I can give you an example. And so if you looked at the new hospital in the west side of Montreal, and you look at how that neighborhood has started, this is just observation, I would say net, 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 overall, that neighborhood has gone through a very positive regeneration. And so, and I don't mean gentrification, and that's just observation, and I, through my work, have visited Montreal for a very, very long time. And so they've taken a brownfield site and I think done some marvelous things that have net improved the fabric. Will this do it? I mean, the experts have a big piece of work in terms of mitigation, I think, and managing...
And so obviously, you know, the downtown east side has one of the most health-challenged populations in the region, and this will be a huge benefit in, in, in the delivery of healthcare. But in your observations, have you seen other opportunities to contribute to the overall health of the community, not just the, the physical health, but the health of the community, and where we might be able to tee some of that out?
Let me speak to that. One of the things, I have a unique perspective, because I get to talk to people who want to make a difference in their community, right? And usually, it's by writing a cheque. And what I'm finding increasingly, as we talk with, with donors, is they're interested as much as anything in how the hospital can improve societal outcomes. And so the interest in mental health and addictions from, in terms of investing funds in that area, or youth mental health is another significant one. Indigenous wellness, I can see some of the smartest and most interested philanthropists in, in Canada, because we've had a chance to chat with some of them, are interested in contributing to that. So what actually they bring, so beyond whatever money we raise for capital, what they also bring oftentimes is an interest in the programmatic work that comes along with it. And so they're prepared to fund research, outreach programs, and kind of innovative things that can make a real difference in those areas. And the, and certainly the areas that St. Paul's focuses on today, you know, particularly in the area of particularly challenged populations, are very, very significant interest to a lot of people. The old days of people just writing a cheque for a wing or something, that, that is still something that happens in fundraising, but increasingly, people are saying, what impact can I have on other people? And I would say the work that St. Paul's does is attracting a lot of interest that ultimately can allow for programmatic change by the researchers and the clinicians to actually make a real difference there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. Thanks again for coming in. Just to remind council, we're at five to nine, kind of creeping on a 12-hour day, and we, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight speakers left. And again, a big decision ahead of us, so just wanted to flag that for you. As we move on to Dr. Don Sin, Scott Wilson, and Jeff Vatney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don Sin, again, I'm the director of the research laboratories, and I'm also a clinician at St. Paul's Hospital in pulmonary medicine. I just wanted to speak briefly about the impact of research and innovation to St. Paul's and to the community at large. And I'll just give a couple of examples as, to illustrate the importance of research and innovation to St. Paul's. As mentioned previously, 20 years ago, cardiac surgical floors were full of patients waiting for open-heart surgery for heart valve. Now, with the advent of percutaneous heart valve replacement, which was pioneered at St. Paul's Hospital by Dr. John Webb in 2005, this has now become a day procedure, and even high-risk patients are able to undergo this and experience tremendous benefits for their health. A second example is with HIV and AIDS. 1995, hospital wards were full of young men and women with end-stage HIV/AIDS disease. Now, HIV/AIDS wards have closed completely at St. Paul's Hospital. And why is that? Because of the innovation that was generated at St. Paul's Hospital and started in 1995 and continues to this day. And in fact, in British Columbia, there is no longer maternal fetal transmission of HIV. That has stopped, so no baby will be born in this province with HIV ever again. Why? Because of the innovations at St. Paul's Hospital. St. Paul's has done other things. We've discovered a gene for asthma, and in the new St. Paul's, we're no longer talking about therapies for asthma, we're now whispering cure for asthma. And why? Because of the innovation that has happened. And why is St. Paul's so special in that regard? Because of this tight integration between patient care and research and innovation, which go hand in hand. And that's why you see in front of you this complex that puts patient care and research innovation in the same, same campus at the same time. And you have clinicians going back and forth from the clinics to the bench and discovering novel therapies, novel ways of delivering care. And the future is very challenging, but I think St. Paul's is up to it, and it will benefit not only the community, but the entire province and entire country as well. And so we're very excited to take advantage of new technologies available to us, including robotics, AI, deep learning, digital health, genomics, personalization of care, and so forth. And we think that the future is now for St. Paul's, but it'll be even greater six years from now. And right now, the infrastructure is aging, and without a new building, this will not be possible. So I urge council to approve this rezoning as soon as possible. Thanks so much.
Thank you. You do have a question from councillor Frye.
Thanks, Dr. Sin, and I Googled you, and it's, sounds like you're doing some pretty amazing stuff with the Centre for Heart-Lung Innovation and, and Respiratory and Epidemiology and...
Don't believe everything on Google, though.
Likewise, please. I wanted to, I wanted to just tease out a bit, because we did have a chance to finish that conversation about vivariums and animal research facilities within this context. And, and, and you sort of made a case for it was really more of a small-scale kind of component. Can you kind of describe what you're talking about as far as...
So, for instance, let me just give you an example. So we discover a new gene for asthma. We don't really know what that gene does in terms of causing asthma. Now, in humans, we wouldn't be able to do the kind of experimentation that's necessary to understand how that gene turns on a certain pathway that leads to asthma. So we would take rodents, usually mice, what we call transgenic mice, change the genes or convert the genes in question, and look at whether these mice develop asthma or not, and what is the pathway? So that's the kind of experiment that we do. Let's say in HIV disease, there's a new therapy, or in opioids, there's new therapeutics to prevent opioid addiction. Well, how would we know that that actually is safe and works in humans? Would you like to go straight to, from the lab to the humans? Of course not. You would have to do some testing to ensure that A, it's safe, or as safe as it can be, and B, that there is an efficacy signal, strong efficacy signal. And you would use, in our case, small animals, usually mice, to understand how these new therapeutics may work in humans. So those are the kind of focused experiments we would do.
Now, understanding that there is a full vivarium at the University of British Columbia that, that handles and experiments on tens of thousands of animals annually, do we need another one at, at St. Paul's, or could you use the existing facilities at UBC and...
We have somebody from UBC to, who can speak more in detail on that, but, you know, there's only finite capacity, even though you say there are tens of thousands of animal experiments that are done at UBC, but there isn't sufficient infrastructure at UBC campus to deal with it. And secondly, even though we're doing animal experimentation, we want to integrate it with the kind of human research and patient care that we're doing. We don't want research to be totally disconnected from patient care or patient issues. Otherwise, you know, there is no need for this kind of campus.
Okay, and I see you have other questions, so I'll just, so does this St. Paul's campus require an actual vivarium, or you were sort of saying that it's more just a smaller-scale laboratory? We're not talking about an animal research center, per se?
Well, I think we're sort of parsing words there, but we do need an animal housing facility and, and a place where we can do animal experimentation. But our intent is to do only rodents, small animals, and nothing bigger than that.
Okay, so where I read that the National Building Science Association really says that it's quite a different thing, you're saying it's not?
Different thing in what sense? In terms of vivarium?
Yeah, yeah, in terms of, and maybe...
Ian, you want to speak on...
Nope, it doesn't work like that.
Okay.
Thanks. Actually, although I find this really fascinating, we're getting so far away from the decision at hand here, which is deciding on this hospital complex. And it is nine o'clock, we've been here for 12 hours. This is a huge decision, and I'd really like council to rein in their questions to whether or not we're going to approve this general project. Thank you.
Okay, it is a conditional rezoning, but okay, yeah, that's, that's fine then.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Dejanova.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. But that being said, I don't think that I can feel sorry for myself, considering I know that doctors work even longer hours, or hospital staff work even longer hours, perhaps, than we sit here.
But they're not in a quasi-judicial body that has to decide on it.
That's true.
Right.
But surgery might be just as important. But I do agree. And I think that in looking at the policy side, let's put that off, because although it may be a conditional rezoning and conditional, or sorry, conditional use, a concern that maybe we're not asking the same questions when there could possibly be these same issues in other facilities. So my question to you is, you spoke to some very important, not only life-saving, but I suppose renowned reasons that St. Paul's is, is known as a leader in healthcare, and as you had said, in maternal fetal medicine. I'm just wondering, do you feel that right now in the current facility, that you wouldn't be able to move forward with some of your work? Or do you know of anyone who wouldn't have the opportunities that they are expecting or, or have goals of moving forward with if we don't move forward with this? And sorry, it might be a redundant question, but it's important to me to know if you're, you have anything else on the go like this.
Absolutely right. I travel the world, and I can tell you that if, if the existing St. Paul's continues to exist as is, the laboratories will have to shut down probably within the next decade. We just don't, we cannot, we don't have the capacity, the infrastructure to support the leading edge, the rapidly advancing technological, technological issues in research. And we just can't accommodate, and we can't attract the very best, and we can't retain the very best. So we will be in a very poor position a decade from now. And so I think the time is very, very imminent for us to move to a newer building or rebuild the existing St. Paul's.
Is it fair to ask you if, if you think, and you don't have to answer this, and I know it's difficult, but in your opinion, some of the research and the work that you've done that has led to, to, as you had said, the not one baby being born with HIV in this province and being able to, to separate that, do you think there's the opportunity to move forward with research for other, everything from illnesses to research, research health overall?
Without, without a new building...
I'm trying to encompass it all. I think you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, without exagger, trying to exaggerate, you know, without a new building, the amount of research that will be done at St. Paul's 10 years from now relative to today will be a fraction, maybe 50% or less. And that will have a tremendous impact, not only on St. Paul's, but throughout the community and the Providence, province at large.
Thank you for answering my question, even though I didn't ask it very well.
Thanks very much, councillor Hardwick.
Hi, over here. So as I understand, you're really on the research side of the hospital, but my question is, is broader than that, and, but maybe you can answer it from the research perspective as well. How many times larger will this complex be compared to the existing hospital buildings? So I know that you're just on the research side, but this is a general question for others that might be coming up to speak as well. How many times larger will this complex be compared to the existing hospital buildings?
I'll just comment on the research footprint. It's expected that the, in the new St. Paul's, the footprint will be at least double the, the footprint that we have now. But more importantly, it will be more modern and, you know, incorporate some of the modern advances that would enable us not only to do better research, but safer research. So, so I think this is actually critical. But the other aspect of hospital, I don't, I can't really speak to. I think it will be bigger, but, you know, maybe Jeff?
That's a question for staff, perhaps.
Anyway, so I, you know, that's really a question for others.
But the research would be at least double the size of what you've got. Thank you.
Great, thanks, and that's it for questions. Thanks for coming in tonight. Scott Wilson, Jeff Vatney, and Laura Leah Shaw. Mr. Wilson, up to five minutes, please, whenever you're ready.
Hello, I'm Scott Wilson, here on my own behalf to speak emphatically in support of the rezoning application for St. Paul's Hospital. Without the good folks there, I would not have survived to speak to you here today. I was admitted to St. Paul's cardiac wing on July 11th of last year after a harrowing air ambulance journey from my hometown of Kelowna, suffering from acute congestive heart failure. This featured repeated shocks from my implanted defibrillator, each feeling... This featured repeated shocks from my implanted defibrillator, each feeling pretty much like a mule kick to the chest, to treat life-threatening ventricular tachycardia storms. A treatment plan was quickly formed by the electrophysiology team to perform a series of cauterizations on certain areas of my heart to settle the rhythms down. This required two days of surgery. On the second of these, I coded blue on the operating table five times. The surgical team kept me on life support and installed a left ventricular assist device the next day. At that point, my brain took a six-week vacation as I succumbed to post-operative dementia. During that time, my wife passed away from cancer. St. Paul's staff were very helpful to both my kids at that time, which was a difficult one for them, as for a while it was unclear if they were going to lose both parents at the same time. In September, I came back into myself, unable to walk. A month later, due to the phenomenal support of every staff member I encountered at St. Paul's, I was released from hospital. At that point, lugging 16 pounds of ventricular assist device, I was able to walk to the grocery store across the street, only with a couple of pauses to catch my breath. In mid-December, I had recovered enough to be placed on the transplant list. A week later, I was back at St. Paul's, receiving my new heart. This time, things went much more smoothly as I walked out of there unassisted 13 days later. Carefully encouraged by the St. Paul's Healthy Heart Programme, my aerobic capacity increased 130% by the time I graduated from the class in May. Now I walk everywhere, between 15,000 and 20,000 steps daily, and I look forward to returning to my duties as principal horn in the Okanagan Symphony in January, and maybe next summer to get some semblance of a golf swing back. I can't overemphasize the abilities, skill, and compassion I experienced at the hands of every single staff member I encountered at St. Paul's, and their seamlessly cohesive teamwork despite an aging facility, which I politely describe as eccentric. Imagine what they'll achieve in a new, bigger, state-of-the-art facility. They deserve it, and everyone in this city does as well. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. As I see, there's no questions for you, but your story's magical, and congratulations on your recovery. Jeff Vopni and Laura Leah Shaw.
Hello.
Hi there.
My name is Jeff Vopni. I'm a cardiac nurse at St. Paul's Hospital, but I'm representing myself today in support of the rezoning application for the new St. Paul's. Before I moved to Vancouver in 2001, I knew I wanted to work at St. Paul's. While studying for my Bachelor of Science in Nursing at UBC, I had the opportunity to compare the teaching culture in my various clinical rotations. I soon recognized the accommodating and professional atmosphere at St. Paul's, and I learned to request rotation at St. Paul's first. On average, there are 130 to 140 students from nursing, allied health, and other professions every day at St. Paul's. There's also 13-plus hundred medical students and residents that train at St. Paul's every year. Myself, I went from being a student at St. Paul's to now having a 15-year career in the cardiology program. My wife was pregnant during my final year at UBC. Both UBC and St. Paul's accommodated me to do my avenues program in maternity. That was fantastic, because I was so preoccupied with the pregnancy, I was now able to merge my immediate academic needs with my personal needs. Before my rotation ended, my son Cole was born at St. Paul's Hospital. I am practically umbilically attached to St. Paul's. Later, St. Paul's sponsored me to take the Critical Care Nursing Program through BCIT. What could be better than getting paid to learn? A theme emerged. My second son, Macklin, was born at St. Paul's before I finished that course. Now a double-barreled umbilical cord attached to St. Paul's. In interventional cardiology, I learned the exciting teamwork and consistent learning environment that makes us the centre of excellence in heart-centered care. I soon trained to work in electrophysiology, or the electrical engineers of the heart, as Scott would agree. I even learned to crimp valves onto the delivery system for the world-renowned TAVR programme led by Dr John Webb. TAVR meaning transfemoral through the leg and then aortic valve replacement, from the leg to the heart. I work with the future interventional cardiologists from around the world. They have all competed to be a part of our interventional cardiology fellowship programme at St. Paul's. They are keen to come here because they want to learn the TAVR methods from John Webb and take that knowledge back to their own practice in their distant countries. I've attended many international cardiac conferences in places like Seattle, Denver, San Diego, and Vancouver, and I see these same physicians that now lead their own TAVR programmes elsewhere. They all say, a great many of them do, that the team at St. Paul's is the best in the world. However, they also say the facilities are embarrassing. In recent decades, the hospital has struggled to accommodate its ever-growing teaching needs within the hospital's aging walls. The new St. Paul's is an opportunity to change that. The new campus will not only have more capacity, but will be designed to support the full integration of teaching, research, innovation, and patient-centered care. This will be better for everyone, including students. Who wouldn't want to learn in BC's most modern facility that has been specially designed to integrate best practice in patient care, has next-generation medical technologies, world-renowned researchers, and provides smoother transitions into primary and community care? St. Paul's is already a wonderful place to learn, but the new St. Paul's will be even better. Like myself, many nurses and doctors who train at St. Paul's stay at St. Paul's and choose to make your city or the lower mainland their home. That's why I hope you vote to support and approve St. Paul's rezoning application today. The city needs a new St. Paul's. My learning experience speaks to the people that helped me get where I want to be, not the physical place. The point is, when St. Paul's moves, the heart and soul of its teaching culture will not be lost, but rather will only gain to grow and flourish in a more amenable, physical environment. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming in today. No questions for you at the moment. Appreciate you sharing your point of view. Laura Leah Shaw. Here we go, we'll lower that table for you.
Oh, thanks. I have copies of the letters for...
Okay, the clerk will come and get that for you. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Very good, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Animal Defence Anti-Vivisection Society of BC. We've been registered since 1927, and I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territory of our First Nations hosts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as council, for having this discussion tonight. We ask that the City of Vancouver register a restrictive covenant on the property preventing research involving animals or other living beings excluding humans to be performed on the property. We further ask the restrictive covenant also prevents St. Paul's Hospital and/or its foundation, or any other entity associated with the hospital, being prevented from funding or participating in any experiments or non-human research outside the new hospital development. By preventing animal research at the new St. Paul's Hospital via the restrictive covenant route, Vancouver can maintain its position as a green city without the biohazards and pollutants from incinerating toxic animal remains after they have been through the research system. Tourism will benefit from positive city image rather than the negative press that will be attracted if unrestricted research towers are allowed to be built, and the public outcry increases beyond the few hundred letters I know you've received thus far. Canada, by the way, for your staff to note, is the only G7 nation without a government-funded body to oversee the process of our research laboratories. It's shameful that what they try to pass off as oversight is actually the fox watching over the hen house. We have had discussions with UBC since 2008, trying to get numbers of animals in research labs. In 2010, they began publishing the numbers, and now they do so on an annual basis. As an example, in 2011, UBC used 225,043 animals in their research labs, and it's not just rodents by any means. It's cats, wild songbirds, pigs, cattle, endangered sea turtles, which we tried to buy from them after the experiments were done with and they wouldn't release them to us, also wouldn't tell us where they sent them. Rodents, fish, primates, the list goes on and on. In their last reporting year of 2017, their numbers were reduced to 171,169 animals. Our work with the university and the changing public perception about using animals in research is paying off, and the numbers are declining. We can make a difference in the health of humans and in the lives of animals, and meet Vancouver's Greenest City targets. The AD would like to offer to meet with City of Vancouver mayor and council and St. Paul's Hospital planners as often as necessary to provide information on alternatives, help shape the restrictive covenant, and ensure that Vancouver and the new hospital are poised to do Vancouver proud in the coming years. And then I have excerpts from points, if I may, that have been raised or publications from city staff. Number one would be the memorandum from the city August 22nd, 2019, where it says, "Animal testing is currently regulated under senior government jurisdiction." The response to that is, "No, it's not." And Gil Kelly, who wrote the piece, said that if staff are satisfied that the activity is responsibly regulated, sorry, if council determines the need to create policy regarding animal testing in Vancouver, then it is recommended that the issue be further studied and brought forward comprehensively to apply equally to all sites within the city. When we talk about oversight on animals and for the Green City initiatives, UBC with their Animal Care Committee, I did the math on one of the presentations I made to the Board of Governors there, the number of applications they get that the committee has to oversee, they spent 45 seconds on average to review each protocol. You can't tell me that they're watching over the welfare of the animals. Sorry, I'm rushing through this, because there is so much I want to say.
There's just 30 seconds left, so...
No, no, I have eight minutes. I said I'm here on behalf of a group.
You have three people with you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we have to have them identified, so I'm going to pause here.
Please pause the clock.
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, you have three people with you? You can identify yourselves? Sure, yeah. Just need three names from associated group members, and you won't be able to speak yourselves, but you give your remaining time. Sorry, your name was? Charlie Walters, thank you, madam here. Okay. Laurie Fitzgerald, great. We've got the three clerks. Do you have those three names? Thanks very much. Okay, please continue.
Thank you. With respect to the Animal Care Committee and the Canadian Council on Animal Care, page 36 on one of the submissions dated April 15th, 2019, shows a picture of researchers at St. Paul's Hospital having fun with their primate research, their primate restraint device. I haven't read anywhere that they got in trouble for that, and if that's not a lack of oversight on them, then I'm shocked. The, okay, we've already talked about medication. Previously, okay, only institutions that receive federal grant money are required to follow CCAC oversight procedures. Previously at UBC, there were well over 25 private labs not receiving government money, and so they did not fall under any regulations, lax as they are here. If animal research is not restricted by a restrictive covenant at St. Paul's, will St. Paul's be allowed to rent out space for private labs, and therefore there's no one overseeing things? There are many alternatives. The University of Windsor's already been mentioned. We've spoken at length and brought in experts from all over the world to speak with UBC. And we have dated October 21st, page 98 on your information, a letter from Nick Jukes. He's with Interneesh, which is an international organization that provides medical equipment for people that are wanting to transition over to non-animal research. Biohazards with respect to, sorry, the biohazards with respect to using animals in research. Rachel Harrison within Vancouver City asked Providence Healthcare how they dispose of the biohazard waste. They said they'll follow the same process as disposable of anatomical waste in the core hospital, which is to bin, weigh, remove, and incinerate it. Now, that in itself creates a biohazard. There's pollutants into the air. We have to look in terms of the workers themselves and how it affects them, the fuel consumption required to maintain required temperatures, disposal of ash from incineration to the landfills, and the resultant air pollution reveal that the incineration process that St. Paul uses is not environmentally sound. That's right now. What'll happen with the new hospital? This is from an article that was sent to you from the BC Foundation of Non-Animal Research. The health risks that they speak about are for the workers and the people living in the surrounding area. You'll be affecting groundwater from animal waste, runoff, et cetera.
Just 30 seconds.
Okay. Very quick summary, if I may. Tara Jackson, she's from the New Zealand Anti-Vivisection Society. She said, "I've heard the news from New Zealand that animal testing may happen at the new St. Paul's Hospital. I wanted to reach out and state my opposition. Globally, there's a shift happening away from animal testing and experimentation. This year, one of the world's top genomics centres closed its animal lab because of this shift." She views Canada as progressive, but feels that we will not be fulfilling our duties to the world and to medical science if we allow animal testing. And by the way, when they talk about heart bypass surgery, it was done for years on dogs. It didn't work. The scientists couldn't figure it out, because dogs' blood clots differently than humans. A surgeon in France said, "To hell with it. He tried it on a human, and it worked."
Thanks very much. And I don't see any questions for you. Thank you very much for coming in and speaking on behalf of your group. Thanks for coming in. Up to five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you, Mayor and council. My name is Lannis Simon. I am opposed to animal testing labs. It wasn't that long ago that we began to hear about 3D printers. They sounded magical and slightly like science fiction. Well, not anymore. Did you know you can buy a 3D printer at amazon.com for less than $500? Technology is changing our whole world swiftly, and in all areas. Fiber optics, solar cells, nanotech, robots, AI, self-driving cars, and yes, the medical field. The advances are stunning. Organs on a chip, sophisticated tests using human cells and tissues, known as in vitro methods, and advanced computer modeling techniques, known as silicone models, to name a few. Using human biology-based platforms in biomedical research makes sense, because we are humans. Results from decades of animal testing have proven to have flaws and be unreliable, in many cases causing downright dangerous outcomes in numerous drugs approved for the marketplace. A list in Wikipedia enlightens us as to the disastrous number of drugs withdrawn. Serious liver injury leading to liver transplant or death, risk of fatal cardiac arrhythmias, cutaneous reaction, multi-organ toxicity, liver and kidney failure, gastrointestinal bleeding, ulcers, increased risk of death. And the list goes on and on.
I'm just going to interrupt you there, if you don't mind. So we're again trying to steer it back to the application in front of us, and I'm just wondering if you're opposed or supporting the application of the hospital?
I do not oppose the hospital application. I oppose any animal lab testing within that facility and other facilities it may have an influence on.
Okay.
These were all side effects in drugs that had been approved for use in humans after years of tests on animals. They were all okayed by, I believe the term Dr Sinn used was, "strong efficacy signals", I'm assuming, and they didn't work. A 2004 study from the US Food and Drug Administration found that 92% of drugs entering clinical trials following animal testing failed to be approved. That figure has risen to 95% of drugs failing in human clinical trials after being tested on animals and judged safe. It's an abysmal record. Animals are sentient beings. They feel pain and isolation. There is no moral, ethical, or scientific justification for allowing animal testing to continue. Don't be misled by the Canadian Council... Don't be misled by the Canadian Council on Animal Welfare. It's run primarily by animal researchers, the pharmaceutical industry, universities, and the scientific community. There is no legal mechanism to prosecute a lab if it inflicts distress or suffering, contrary to the voluntary guidelines. We all want the best healthcare for ourselves and our loved ones. If animal testing was good and reliable science, then the status quo would likely remain. But the scientific results are pointing us in a direction of new techniques, using computer modeling and human and cell-based tests. We now have the tools to move to a new paradigm in biomedical research. St. Paul's isn't even built yet, and it's not expected to open until 2026. That is a long way off in technology time. Its own website talks of "state-of-the-art facilities using the latest technology and supported by leading-edge research." This shouldn't be a contentious issue. It is a common sense issue. Animal biology doesn't provide the best answers for human biology questions. Vancouver and St. Paul's have the opportunity to move past the cruelty and inefficiency of today and embrace the future.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And no questions? So thanks very much for coming in. We have Kingston Walters and Alicia Munsong Song? Munsong? Munsong Song? Sorry about that. Kingston Walters. Great, thanks very much. Up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Kingston Walters, and I am 15, and I am an animal activist. I want the city of Vancouver and St. Paul's Hospital to use the latest technologies for their research. That does not include animals. Since I was seven, I've been speaking up for the animals. Not that they can't speak, they actually can. It's not just very many people listen to their cries for help. And that is what happens behind closed doors, especially in animal research laboratories. Animals are tortured, restrained, and traumatized. They are screaming out for someone to listen. And all of this for the sake of research that is not entirely reliable. That is why I am here speaking to you tonight. I believe that the future of research does not use animals. Instead, it uses new technologies like 3D printing, which replicates human tissues and organs. Vancouver is a progressive and green city and has the opportunity to live up by its name. As a progressive city, you have the opportunity to allow groundbreaking, essential, and nonviolent methods of research in this proposed laboratory. A new animal testing research lab will not align with your green values. Animal testing labs have negative effects on the environment, and that includes water and air pollution and soil contamination. Last year, I met two scientists leading the way for non-animal testing, Dr. Tru and Dr. Ray Greek. They inspired me and gave me hope. I have done my research, and I encourage you to do the same. Please look into these groundbreaking and cruelty-free research practices. When Vancouver declared a climate emergency, you made a commitment to fight climate change. Please do the right thing for the animals and my generation. Please commit to non-animal testing, and thank you for listening.
Thanks very much for coming in and sharing your story. I have no questions for you at the moment, but appreciate you contributing here this evening. Alicia, can you help me with the last one so I don't embarrass myself?
No problem. It's Munsong Song.
Munsong Song, okay. I wasn't too far off. Okay, thanks very much. Up to five minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Alicia Munsong Song. I am the acting director for Exchange Inner City. Exchange Inner City, in collaboration with Bisocial Canada, strongly recommends that the city of Vancouver approve the new St. Paul's Hospital rezoning application. Exchange Inner City is a downtown eastside-based community backbone organization focused on community economic development projects and policy initiatives in Vancouver's inner city. Our mission is to collectively foster a vibrant and inclusive local economy where all residents can prosper and live full and rewarding lives. In collaboration with Bisocial Canada, we represent a broad cross-section of inner-city constituents to support the engagement efforts, implementation, and evaluation of the city of Vancouver's community benefit agreement policy. Additionally, we insist that community not just be consulted in the CBA development process, but be an actual collaborative partner in all processes, all phases of the CBA rollout. Thus, Exchange Inner City and Bisocial Canada have been actively engaging with St. Paul's Hospital to support them with their CBA process. For the first time in a development process, the community is being represented as an equal member at the table along with the city of Vancouver and the new St. Paul's Hospital team to ensure that this development maximizes its community benefits and meets four key areas of opportunity, which include employment that is diverse, local, and provides meaningful job opportunities to people with barriers to traditional employment, training and apprenticeship opportunities, a diversified supply chain and social procurement outcomes, and community development initiatives. For example, the new St. Paul's Hospital could create community benefit opportunities for social enterprises and indigenous-based employment agencies to deliver accessible training programs within the community so that inner-city residents and indigenous youth can gain the skills needed to be connected to meaningful employment during the construction phase of the new St. Paul's Hospital. Secondly, the new St. Paul's Hospital could work with the inner-city nonprofit organizations and local academic institutions to deliver barrier-free education and training for such jobs like care aide workers to work on the front lines of the hospital during its operation phase. Thirdly, it could provide training opportunities for local residents to become early childhood educators to care for the children in a much-needed daycare center that could potentially be built through the new hospital's campus development that's meeting a community development initiative. And fourthly, St. Paul's will work with community to identify social value opportunities in their supply chain and promote buying of goods and services from local social enterprise and diverse-owned businesses throughout all development phases. Essentially, it's important to acknowledge that the new St. Paul's Hospital development project isn't just another building development. It is a major catalyst that will strengthen community relationships, produce lasting benefits with ripple effects to build a healthy inner-city community, advance St. Paul's mission to meet social justice and community development goals, and supports the city to meet its healthy city strategy and poverty reduction goals. Most importantly, the new St. Paul's Hospital development and its commitment to provide community benefit opportunities in collaboration with Exchange Inner City and Bisocial Canada is a step towards true community participation and transformative systems change in the city's development process. Hence, these are the reasons why Exchange Inner City, in collaboration with Bisocial Canada, support the new St. Paul's Hospital and Health Campus rezoning application. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any have a question from councillor Carr?
Thanks so much for coming, and I just have one question, which is, have you and your organization actually thought about the potential impact that St. Paul's move to the flats may have on housing in the surrounding area that is currently, in some cases, a critical supply of lower rent and lower-income-focused housing, and even rental suites that may get converted to Airbnb because of the incredible number of visitors that will come into the area?
Yes, definitely. So our organization represents local residents, many of whom are low-income residents of the downtown eastside neighborhood, and so housing is definitely something that comes up as part of community economic development and intersects in the daily lives of people in that community. And so as part of the community benefit agreement process, through the engagement efforts that we will support St. Paul's with and the city of Vancouver, that is something that will be discussed, will be considered. It will be definitely highly looked at as our organization and the people that we represent are concerned about displacement, but that is something that can be worked through in the CBA policy process.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks so much, and that's it for questions. Our final speaker is Faye Goatia Walters. Hello.
My name is Faye Goatia Walters, and I live at 3362 Prince Edward Street, Vancouver. Mount St. Joseph's Hospital is located between where I live and the flats. I would like to know if Mount St. Joe is part of the proposal. I worry about this possibility. Sorry. I worry about that this might be a possibility, information being withheld from the report. And I say this because, as of a few weeks ago, I read a rezoning report prepared by the planning department, which I found to be incomplete and thereby, in my opinion, misleading. Thus, I worry that the planning department is not being upfront with council and the mayor, and that they would rather get things passed quickly and deal with the problems after getting the proposals approved. I would like council to note that I have grave concerns with this methodology. The following comments that I have will explain and substantiate my doubts and distrust about any rezoning proposal, this one included, that come before council. I ask for your patience, as I express to the planners and to you, the negative feelings that have come about because of a report and a submission three weeks ago.
Excuse me, ma'am. We're dealing specifically with this proposal.
I will say it.
And we'll also be careful with people's reputations.
I understand.
We don't bring them into disrepute.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Where in the report regarding 3469 Fraser Street is the fact that the site sits in a swamp? Answer, nowhere.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes?
It's this site we're dealing with, with St. Paul's, which is not on Fraser Street.
It's on Fraser Street.
This one is not.
I'm questioning. I'm here because I'm questioning the way the reports are coming to us.
Okay, which is a kind of a--
I'll be very quick. I promise.
But not actually within the purview of what we're doing this evening?
But I will, if you let me finish.
No. I'm sorry. So in this hearing, we have to specifically talk about this application today, not general policy or how we approach things here at the city. Those are perfectly, you can bring those to regular council meetings.
Can I bring it up? Because we tried. We spoke to the, we submitted to the public hearing. We were put in the other category, not the opposition category. We tried to get a meeting with the planning department.
Yep.
They called us, and they refused to meet with us.
Okay. What we're dealing with this evening is, and I'm sorry that you've had--
I understand, and maybe I should end. I'll try and connect it.
Pardon me?
I'll connect it to the St. Paul's proposal.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
Okay. Okay, as a planner--
Excuse me, sir. You don't have the floor. Madam, if you'd continue, that would be--
As a planner, this is just my ending. You need to enter your workplace as professionals, with us in mind, with the understanding that neighborhoods and communities have immeasurable value and should not be sold to the first developer, nor be subjected to developments that might prove to be dangerous in the light of the big one or climate change. And I speak about the flats. Again, my question, is it possible that Mount St. Joe is going to be integrated into the new St. Paul's Hospital in the flats? Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time today. Great, okay, that's it for speakers on the list, officially on the list. I'm now going to call from the audience up to three times for anybody else that would like to speak to the St. Paul's Hospital application specifically. So I'll make my first call, and if you want to speak to this, please give us your name and let us know if you're opposed or in favor of this rezoning. Up to five minutes. Whenever you're ready.
My name is Larry Benj. I am co-chair of the Coalition of Vancouver Neighborhoods. We are opposed to this rezoning application and not to a new hospital, and I can understand the excitement around a new hospital and all the work that the staff has done is appreciated. But there are some concerns that we have about this. First is the seismic zone which this site sits in. It's one of the most susceptible zones in the city. It is also one of the highest liquefaction zones in the city, and so it's susceptible to damage in a seismic event. Also, it's in fill land on Falls Creek, which is a tidal basin and is susceptible to rising tides. And even though the projections say that we can expect a meter in such-and-such years and two meters in additional years, everything has been happening a lot faster than even the scientists can have predicted in present day, so that is a worrisome condition. Also, the access problems with the site, with the viaducts coming down and the redirection of the roads through that area. Access in an emergency situation where you can, you know, think about or visualize some events in B.C. Place as well as Rogers Arena, sometimes they get out fairly close to each other, and an emergency vehicle trying to get through that from the downtown area would have serious problems. Also, the displacement that councillor Swanson talked about, the effect of a new facility on the surrounding neighborhoods is problematic. But the city can actually, you as a council, can actually put conditions on the development in that area and help solve that possible problem. But the report itself calls for an expert panel to assess, evaluate, and make recommendations on the seismic issues, the rising tide issues, and we wonder why that recommendation, that panel report, has not been issued as yet. Why is it not issued before a rezoning instead of after a rezoning? The present site is surrounded by support businesses and facilities. There are affiliated medical facilities and hotels and et cetera, and the new site is pretty much devoid of that, and if it was supplied with that, it would certainly call for a lot of redevelopment in that area. I think that's about it.
Okay. Thanks so much. You have a question from councillor De Genova?
Thank you. If we could maybe build a hospital without a rezoning, I'd be amazed. I understand that you're speaking specifically of this project. I'm going to ask you some of the questions that have come from the information that I've come to learn and consider as evidence from some of the speakers this evening, and that is the public benefit the hospital would have to our city. So if this would impede the treatment of individuals, and we already understand that St. Paul's Hospital is underserved in the fact that not only are there longer wait times, but perhaps they're not able to provide the services that they could otherwise with a facility this size, that's what I'm hearing. I'll have to make that decision after, but I'm hoping you can input on, I understand your concerns. I appreciate you staying all this time and sharing them. If it were an either-or situation, and there was no way to move forward with the, you're saying that you support the hospital, you don't support the rezoning, if there was no way to move forward except in this model, would you support this?
Well, I'm not arguing for stopping anything. Well, I'm not arguing for stopping anything. My main point is that there needs to be, it seems to me, a study on the seismic issues surrounding the site as well as rising tide issues around the site. The city itself has already called for an expert panel to review the situation and make My understanding is that that study has not been completed as yet, and I'm wondering why it should not be completed before a rezoning as opposed to after a rezoning.
So I will ask our staff, I imagine they're very expensive, and if you're not moving forward with the rezoning, but I have just asked that question before about particular studies, but happy to jot it down.
It is a staff recommendation.
Also, though, you're asking that we wait and delay, is that correct?
I have a question. Question answered.
I'm asking, sorry.
What's the question?
Are you asking that we delay this or refer this off, which I understand would mean that a whole new application would have to come back likely? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, my first wonderment is that some people here on staff have been working on this hospital issue for 15 or so years or more. And I'm wondering why in 15 years, given the fact that this site is in a serious liquefaction zone, in a city that has, in danger of a serious seismic event, that this, this study has not been completed already? So an answer, a simple answer to your question, yes.
Okay. So you would prefer to wait, even if I hear from staff later on that waiting could mean no new hospital, and to move forward with a hospital, this, with this proposed rezoning? And you don't have to answer that, but I'd appreciate it if you...
Well, I would, I would, my feeling is, personal feeling is, that if without, and I live and I was raised in the Bay Area, so I know about seismic events. If you go ahead with a project in a serious seismic zone without an expert review of the conditions, you're, you're really asking for trouble. And so I'm concerned about a billion-dollar hospital put in a fill zone with high seismic danger and being in a seismic event where that hospital, which serves the majority of the downtown core, is made inoperable or through a flood event. And I don't, I don't quite understand why you would build a facility on a site like this.
Okay. Do you know of any other sites this size?
Just 15 seconds.
That's not my job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Before we move to councillor Hardwick, we're closing in on 10 o'clock, so I'm going to need a motion to extend. Thank you, councillor Bly, councillor Weeb, all in favor of extending until we finish this application?
Can we amend that? Point of information.
No, I've got a motion on the floor to extend.
Extend indefinitely or to a certain time?
Until we finish the application this evening. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we don't have a motion to extend. Awesome. We need to, we need to...
You had to read out an opposition.
Okay, so we're not going to, so go ahead councillor Hardwick with your question.
I'm sorry, I'm fading.
We'll be back on Thursday night.
And I'm sure I'm not the only one here. So just to reiterate, your concerns are seismic and sea level rise, access and transportation, and displacement of residential, is that accurate?
Yes.
And we've, we've, why does the Coalition for Vancouver Neighborhoods care about those three things?
Because St. Paul's Hospital, as expressed by the planning staff and a lot of other people who have already spoken quite well and clearly, is a major facility for the city of Vancouver. It's a facility that is going to provide medical service to the citizens of Vancouver. Any citizen should be concerned about the issues surrounding the development of such a facility.
Okay. I didn't hear anything from you about the removal of this activity from the West End where it's serving, you know, a lot of density of population. Is that a factor in this?
Well, I did briefly say that the present site is, has a whole lot of existing infrastructure, medical offices and support businesses around the existing site, which supposedly will be relocated or not, I don't know, but it's, there's easy access to all of those facilities right now at the present site. It wouldn't be the same situation at the new site unless the campus integrated all of those things, and that means all those businesses would be moving to new facilities, and I'm sure they're going to be more expensive, et cetera, et cetera.
We did hear from other speakers that this rezoning would be considered a milestone for fundraising. And ultimately, you know, there's obviously been size constraints at the existing location, and we've, we've heard a lot of concern about the aging building. You know, I know you said it's not your job to find another location for this, but you know, we're, we're in a little bit of, you know, difficult position here, trying to, to figure out how to enable a facility that is constricted and at the same time, you know, looking at obvious problems. Yes, there's no question that, that this is in fill and, and, you know, there'd be problems with that. Wisdom of Solomon, under the circumstances, really what would be your suggestion? Just that we say no, or can you offer anything that is more constructive than that?
If your selected expert panel issued a report that said the conditions of seismic susceptibility and the exposure to rising tides or flood conditions or things like that could be mitigated through engineering, then I'd be a whole lot more comfortable with it. I know that the engineering department representative here has said, well, we're just going to remove all the soil and we're going to go down to bedrock. That's all good, but I'm really, I have to be cautious because planning staff itself, and I'll come back to it, has called for or recommended an expert panel to do a study and come back with recommendations. And if, if the, if the staff itself or as part of this rezoning is recommending that, then why hasn't it been done already? And it seems like it's necessary if they are recommending it. I'm in a quandary myself.
Thank you. And good point, there are more questions to be asked. Thank you.
Thanks very much then. That's it for questions for you, sir. Thanks for coming in. So I'm going to try for a motion again that we can extend to just finish with the speakers. Councillor Bly, moved. Second councillor Carr, all in favor? Any opposed? Thanks very much. Okay, so anybody else? A second call for speakers? Awesome. Come on up. Okay, up to five minutes. And again, if you could just make sure that you're specifically talking about this rezoning, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, I'm not opposed to the hospital. I'm not opposed to the detox that they had me when I spoke about the detox. They, they put me down as opposed. You know, I'm all for better healthcare for the city. But there are problems when we have a big company like IBI that produced the plans and did not produce a transportation plan for this whole site.
We're just dealing with the rezoning here, though. So we'll just...
That's part of the transportation plan. Again, you are bullying like that person said. Please learn what to do.
I am.
Being the mayor of the city, you should know what your rights are to do and not to question me that I've been here since 1971.
That's great, sir.
And know all the mayors of the cities and knows exactly what your rights are.
Sir, tonight is a public hearing about this specific rezoning.
Yeah, and I'm talking about St. Paul Hospital.
Okay, keep going.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Go ahead.
I don't know why you're questioning me about it, you know? You know? So the problem is transportation, as, as was mentioned by the previous speaker, of course. It could be a big mess when we have B.C. Place, Rogers Arena, and so forth getting out, and all emergency vehicle trying to get to, to St. Paul's. Some cities designate a special lane for emergency vehicles, and that could be possibly done here as well. Many European cities especially do that, but, you know, the staff trying to say, oh, the Skytrain is only two blocks away. Well, it's not really two blocks, it's four to 500 meters between the Skytrain entrance and the entrance to the new hospital. And people with disabilities, seniors, they wouldn't be, they can't walk that distance. It's too far for them. The Children's Hospital, Women's Hospital, they, they provide a shuttle bus service to the King Edward Skytrain Station. Bernaby Hospital does. Surrey Hospital does. Royal Colombians, so they, more than likely, this hospital, if they want people to, to, to get there, they'll have to provide some kind of a shuttle service because can't trust transling to do anything. So, you know? So, so, so these are just some simple suggestions. And maybe they could move the entrance to the hospital closer to, to the Main Street Skytrain Station. Maybe they can provide an, a, a, a walkway, covered walkway like the PNE used to have so the people can walk without being bothered by the rain and so forth to the, to the main part of the hospital. That's again, something to presume together with the Parks Board and so forth because it will go through the park. So there's all kinds of possibilities, but when you are, when the staff only, this is, I think, the first time this council has discussed this issue of this hospital being there. And that's the problem, when you don't discuss things previously and to, to get more information from everybody about the possibilities for this hospital. You know, everything is done in a rezoning meeting and, you know, it should have been done well before. And so, as I said, I'm in favor of a hospital. I just have some concerns that, you know, if we leave everything to the staff, not much will be done to improve the transportation to this site. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. No questions this evening. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? This is the third call? Okay, thanks very much then. Seeing there are no speakers, no additional speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. As few public comments were received on this item after 5:00 p.m., I suggest we close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments and asking further questions to staff. Everybody okay with that? Thanks very much. So we are going to now, that's it for this evening, and we'll come back on Thursday evening. I think it's at 6 o'clock. Is it 6 o'clock on Thursday? So I need a motion to refer this to unfinished business. Thank you very much, following the standing committee meeting tomorrow. Is that right? Is it tomorrow? Unfinished business on the fifth. Okay, great. So we're looking to adjourn the meeting, but we're going to first shift this, the, the questions to the staff and closing comments to the 5th of November. Unfinished business. So I need a motion for that? Thank you, a secondor? Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? That's fine, thanks. I need a motion to, are we adjourning? We're adjourning? To adjourn. Thank you, councillor Hardwick, secondor. Thank you councillor De Genova, all in favor of adjourning? Anybody opposed? Nope, great, thanks very much. Thanks for your work today.
...